Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It's our Monday, January 14th, 2019 meeting. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice.
And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the Commission, as well as staff that are here this evening. To my far right is Jamie Hine, who is an alternate on the Commission. Next to Jamie is Jeff Kohan, who's a Commission member. And next to Jeff, to my immediate right, is James Fitzsimmon, also a Commission member. To my immediate left is Rocco Madarazzo, who is the Secretary of the Commission. To the far left of the table is Steve Allenson, who is an alternate on the Commission. At the staff table to my left is Cynthia Kleist, our Recording Secretary. Next to Cynthia is our Zoning Enforcement Officer, Amy Torrey. And next to Amy will be Casey Han, our Town Planner. At the staff table to my right is Rob Baltramitis, who is our Town Engineer. And next to Rob is Janice Small, our Corporate Counsel. I'm Jim Sechter. I'm the Chairperson of this Commission. Our next order of business would be to approve the minutes of the December 10th, 2018 meeting. Any Commission members with any comments on the minutes? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, will we approve the minutes that the December 10th meeting has submitted?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Madarazzo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain as well.
And I abstain as was not at the meeting. Also, I do want to say that the Vice Chairperson of this Commission, J.P. Menoit, will not be here this evening. Unfortunately, he had a professional business meeting that he attempted to rearrange, but he was not able to do that, so he is not here this evening. Going down our list, as far as items that will not be heard this evening, item number one, which is a special permit. It's a special permit for Patel for Shield Hotels at 1175 Barnes Road. The applicant has requested that we take no action on that application at the present time. The next item is item number five, old business. It's a site plan for 5,000 square feet for a water pollution facility for the town of Wallingford. Again, on that application, it was open last month. However, the applicant has requested that we take no action on that application, and that will be heard next month. It brings us to, so if anyone's here, and I seriously doubt it, for those two applications, again, they will not be heard, which brings us to our next order of business, which is item number two. It's an old business. It's a special permit for Research Parkway at Wallingford LLC.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you. I did just hear from Mr. Menard, and he's delayed, but he is on his way. So if you wanted to move to the next application to give him time to get here, since he is the fifth voting member, that is, that would probably be recommended.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Han. That being the case, I think I will then backtrack. We'll drop down to item number three, which is a site plan. It's a vehicle storage facility. It's Six Research LLC. It's Six Research Parkway. Mr. Madarazzo, if you would please note all correspondence for the record. And I guess, as you can see, we have some problem with our ceiling, so if we'd ask all the presenters to please use the lower table. And Mr. Madarazzo, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, we have an interdepartmental referral referencing the application 214-18 dated September 10th, 2018. This is signed by the Fire Marshal. We have an interdepartmental referral received. Actually, this is revised. 1215, same thing. Referencing the application 214-18 received September 10th, 2018, signed by Chief Engineer. Interoffice memorandum to Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated October 1st, 2018. Interdepartmental referral referencing the application 214-18 received September 10th, 2018. This is signed by the Health Director. A memorandum to Casey Han, Town Planner, from Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, dated December 10th, 2018. Correspondence referencing a site plan application 214-18 dated September 27th, Interdepartmental referral referencing the application 214-18 received September 10th, 2018, signed by the Environmental Planner. Interoffice memorandum to Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated October 1st, 2018. Interoffice memorandum to Casey Han, Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated October 5th, 2018. Correspondence from Centeviva Law Firm dated November 8th, 2018. This is correspondence signed by Dennis Centeviva. Interoffice memorandum to Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated December 5th, 2018. Interdepartmental referral referencing the application 214-18 dated September 10th, 2018. This is signed by the Fire Marshal. Memo correspondence to Planning and Zoning Casey Han from from the, I'm sorry, Michael Godelski, the Fire Marshal, dated September 20th, 2018. Interoffice memorandum to Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated October 1st, 2018. Correspondence to Casey, well, at this point, Costello, Dennis Centeviva Law Firm dated Monday, October 1st, 2018. Correspondence, again, from Dennis Centeviva? Centeviva, can't get that right. To Casey, well, at this time, Costello, dated October 1st, 2018. Interoffice memorandum to Casey Han, Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated January 7th, 2019. Correspondence from Michael Ott to Casey Costello at that time dated October 1st, 2019. And correspondence referencing the site plan application 214-18 dated January Signed by Casey Han, Town Planner. And a memo to Planning and Zoning Commission from Department of Engineering dated January 11th, 2019. I believe that's it.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. If the applicant and/or his representatives please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your record, my name is Dennis Centeviva. I'm an attorney with the Centeviva Law Firm. To my right is Roslyn Page from Winterborne Land Services. Michael Ott, who is our Civil Engineer, is ill this evening, so Roslyn will be up at the easel shortly to participate in the presentation. By way of background, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, the parcel is 3.059 acres in size. It is located in the IX Zone. It is currently vacant. The lot runs east to west from Research Parkway to Thorpe Avenue. It has 254 feet of frontage on Research Parkway, where 250 feet is required by your regulations. The applicant received wetlands approval at the December 5, 2018 meeting. We're there because of the jurisdictional requirement where more than 20,000 square feet is impervious. Now, the applicant, as you can tell from the application, proposes to construct an auto transport and automotive storage facility at the site. The building, as proposed, is 9,720 square feet. The applicant meets the open space, maximum coverage, building height, and parking requirements for this particular zone based upon the size parcel and the size building proposed. Importantly, there is no vehicle fueling, maintenance, repairs, or washing at the site. Applicant has a related company that operates under a repair's license in another location within the town. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn this over to Roslyn to run you through the site plan.
If the Commission is willing, I'd like to make my presentation from the easel.
Oh, absolutely.
And again, I apologize for Mr. Ott not being able to be here. I have been in on various meetings to do with this project. My company is a land surveying company that did the survey work, so I'm pretty familiar with it, but there may be a few engineering finesse details that I miss, in which case I apologize, in advance. So, as Attorney Centeviva has pointed out, the property is located on Research Parkway. On the map here, Research Parkway is on the right-hand side of the map. Thorpe Avenue is on the left-hand side of the map. And as you are probably very well aware, in this area, no access is permitted out onto Thorpe Avenue, so this sort of functions as a rear yard to the property. What we are proposing is 9,720 square foot building with offices in the front, and the rear portion, the rear two-thirds or so, are going to be used for temporary auto storage. What the applicant does is he runs a auto transport service where he goes down to the ports, picks up new cars that are being brought up to New England on car carriers, brings them to this site, unloads them, stores them in this building, and then reloads them onto separate car carriers to deliver to different dealerships. And I believe there's some backflow with vehicles that go in the opposite direction as well, but basically that's the function of his business. So what he was looking for when he bought this site was he was looking for a site with a large area where he had a significant amount of area that he could maneuver his car carriers around to load them, unload them. The car carriers, as I understand it, they go out on Monday mornings, and they come back in on Fridays. He has 10 to 12 car carriers that are out on the road most of the time, and they come in, unload, and reload, and take off from there. So the site has been designed with that in mind. The grades have been kept to a very minimal type of grade because, as I'm sure as you have seen with car carriers, they have a pretty low clearance when they're fully laden. So one of the important things with this site was to keep it as flat as possible. For security reasons, the applicant wishes to have his entire loading and unloading area fenced in, so there is a fence around the entire site, the loading area. It will have the privacy slats in it. It will be black PVC, maximum eight feet height. There will be no razor wire on the top. He has decided that he doesn't want to have that, so there'll be fence all the way around. There'll be the black privacy slats. There will be a gate in here, right level with the front of the building, which will be operated by the drivers for security reasons, so they can come in and go out and access the area. The parking for the office staff and visitors will be in the front, outside of the fenced-in area, and that parking area is located here on the map, right in front of the building. The car storage, car carriers will be parked in the back here when they're not in use. The fence has been located around the parking area with about 10 to 12 feet distance between the edge of the pavement and the fence to allow for snow storage. So that is all the way around. That was, again, a requirement for the applicant. In terms of utilities, the building will be served by municipal water and sewer. The storm drainage design, as you are aware, this area is in the watershed protection district, and so the water and sewer department have been very much involved with us with doing the design for this layout. And one of the reasons that we have not submitted final drainage calculations is that we have been working with the water and sewer department to finesse some of the storm drain drainage design. And as a result of Eric's input, we have made some slight modifications to the drainage, stormwater management system that we will address in our final drainage calculations. Basically, what happens is drainage from these parking areas is required because of the watershed protection district to go first into oil-water separators. So there are three proposed here to carry, to pick up the water from this system, this parking area, and this driveway. And then after the oil-water separators, again, because of the watershed protection area, the storm drainage goes into a sand filter. And this is a requirement from the water and sewer department. And from there, it then goes into a typical detention basin type of system. Roof leader will be discharged out directly into a swale that exists out onto the Research Parkway. It's generally considered clean water, so that doesn't have to go through this system. We have met with the Town Planner on several occasions and gone through her comments, so I just wanted to go through those. I think that the plans that have been submitted are pretty much, have pretty much covered all of the Town Planner's comments. We have shown the additional truck parking spaces. Hopefully, we have explained the specifics of the site operations. Once all the drainage work has been reviewed by Eric Kruger, we can finalize our drainage calculations. We agree that maintenance of the components of our drainage system that are located within the right-of-way will be the responsibility of the record owner, and that we will provide a maintenance plan for the stormwater system. Our plans indicate that trees along Thorpe Avenue will not be removed. The lighting, we have submitted an updated lighting plan to the Town Planner's Office demonstrating light trespass, and hopefully that has answered the questions that Casey had about light trespass. I have copies of the lighting plan, if it's something that the Commission would like to take a look at.
Is it the same one that was attached to? Oh, no. So I don't have an updated one. I'm sorry.
It's the one that you received the other day, I think.
11019?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so that should have been in your packets, too. Attachment 3S.
I am not a lighting expert, but what I can tell you is that the four crosses on the map are just symbols of trees that were to be removed, and that the shapes, the sort of shapes that look a bit like ovals with sort of little bump outs on them, those are the areas that the light poles will cast their light. So hopefully that makes sense to everybody.
And I take it the circles are existing trees. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Either existing trees or trees to be, the trees on the Thorpe Avenue side are existing trees to remain. The trees on the Research Parkway are trees to be planted.
Okay.
In addition to the light poles, there will be building lights over each door. That's a requirement, I believe, a building code requirement, that there be lights illuminating each door, but they will be, as required, the cutoff lighting. One question that the Town Planner had was about the movement of these car carriers, and whether there was any concern that they would need to back out onto Research Parkway as part of their daily operation. One of the reasons that the applicant wanted this long driveway here was so that there would be, and to have this area fenced in, was so that he could conduct all his activities in the back here, and it's not his wish to be backing out onto Research Parkway. But we understand that the town staff would like to see some kind of documentation of the turning radiuses of these car carriers. What we have determined is that because there is such a huge variety of styles of car carriers, there is no normal template, like there is for an SU30, or a trailer truck, or UPS van. There are no standard templates. So what we were going to suggest was that with the Town Engineer present, and the applicant, when he is back in town with a car carrier, we could do a field test on some appropriate piece of property where we could, he could back up and turn around and demonstrate, hopefully, to the Town Engineer's satisfaction that there is no issues with vehicles being able to pull out. The reason we have shown 100 feet of asphalt in the southerly direction and 130 feet of asphalt in this direction, this area was the area that the applicant told us he was looking for. And he runs the car carrier business. He is a driver, and these were the dimensions that he gave us that he felt he needed for the safe turning, a manipulation of his vehicles in this area. So we offer that up as the practical solution to a legitimate question from
I suspect our Town Engineer would not have a problem with that.
So at that point, at this point, I would like to turn it back to the Commission and the town staff to ask any follow-up questions in case they've missed things.
Before I do that, I just do want to indicate that Mr. Allenson will be, you know, sitting on this, on this application as the fifth Commission member. So with that, first, let me, before I turn it over to Commission members for any questions, Mrs. Han, I know you had a rather long list of comments for the applicant. I did see that a number of those have been addressed, but if you could please go over items that still may be outstanding from your perspective.
Sure. And I think Ms. Page did a great job of sort of covering kind of what my remaining comments were, or sort of what the outstanding issues were, and a lot of that has been addressed. And then in my January 10th, 2019 letter, I summarized what I would request as remaining conditions of approval. The, one of the things which I think both of the applicant's representatives touched on is we wanted to make sure that this operation is occurring, it's a warehousing, and that it's occurring within the building, and so that we don't end up with any, because there will be, you know, a fairly decently sized sort of parking or trucks or truck turning area on the site, that wouldn't become an area where vehicles would be stored or anything like that. So we have had a lot of conversation about that, and you also have a, your attachment 3K from Attorney Centeviva. I would also ask that you make that a representation, or, sorry, make that a condition of approval, and in that is a representation about the operation. So again, that talks about the operations on the site. No fueling of vehicles, no maintenance of vehicles, no repair of vehicles. And I would also ask, and we've discussed this, that you add no washing of vehicles. That's also something that's not permitted, wouldn't be permitted in this zone. And I think is also in a comment from your, from the water, in some of your comments from the Water and Sewer Division. And so in terms of outdoor, any sort of outdoor storage, we've talked about this. There's no outdoor storage represented on the plan. If at some point, outdoor storage is allowed in all of your commercial zones, provided that it's screened, but it does have to be shown as part of your site plan, so as part of the site plan. So if at some point, this potential, you know, this applicant or some future occupant of the building wanted the option of having outdoor storage, they would have to come back before you for a site plan modification to show where it's going and to show the screening. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear on the record. In terms of the lighting, there is one light out at the front of the property that I am still not entirely sure complies with your regulations, because you do have some light trespass over the property line towards the road from there. So I did include a, in my memo, final plans to include a lighting plan in compliance of 6.26C. So one of the things that I wanted to finalize with the applicant is that perhaps they can shield the lights to, in a way, and direct the light in a way that further prevents the light trespass over the property line, because your regulations don't allow for light trespass over the property line, and we're still showing like five-foot candles. It reduces pretty significantly by the time you actually get to the road. So a little bit is typically, what your regulations specifically don't allow is like an intrusive glare from the parking lot lights or, so I don't necessarily, they could have a little bit over the line without, into the right-of-way without it being an issue, but I just want to, I want to work through that with them and make sure we get it reduced to an appropriate amount. So that was the only remaining, the outstanding issue with the lights. And then there was discussion, so you do see comments from both myself and the Town Engineer with recommended conditions, all of which we've been through with the applicant and most of which Ms. Page touched on. The maintenance of the stormwater system that's in front of the property adjacent to the town right-of-way, or within the town right-of-way, adjacent to the road. I'm pleased that they have taken away the razor wire and agreed to some fencing that I think we and agreed to some fencing that I think we felt was a little more appropriate for the zone. And the, okay, so the, the only other, I think, issue I would, I guess, two other things. One is in terms of the backup issue, I believe, I, I think that's, at least I'm comfortable with that, as long as the town engineer is in terms of as a condition of approval to have them demonstrate that the turning movements do work on the property. The other part of that is, this is somewhat, it's, they've agreed to, it's also in your regs and it's explicitly stated in my conditions that there's not to be any backing up onto or off of the town right of way. So it's, they would have no, there would be no reason to design it in such a way that it wouldn't work because they're not going to be able to do that.
Excuse me, just everyone, please turn your phones off, please. Who's ever playing the music, thank you.
And then finally, as my final condition of approval, I will, once we have the drainage, make sure the drainage is all finalized because that could impact the S and E a little bit, determine a sedimentation and erosion control bond.
Thank you. Commission members with any questions for the, for the applicant? Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just got a few questions. And, and I'm glad to see this was located as close to Research Parkway as possible. I think that's good location. How, how height, how high is that, that building? Is that two stories, three stories?
I believe it's thirty feet.
Three stories, okay. The landscaping and the trees in the, in the back, I've been by there many times, but I'm, I'm just wondering if there can be some type of, you know, further landscaping that, that may be able to shield some of that building from Thorpe Avenue.
Right now, there is a tree line here, a tree line here, specific large trees here and then a group of trees here. So I don't, I don't know that additional trees would, would help with screening, but.
Yeah, what I'm thinking is some type of, you know, ornamental type thing. So when the leaves fall off those trees.
So are you looking for, for example, for evergreens?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
What, what are the hours of operation gonna be?
I believe currently it's basically Monday to Friday.
And how many, how many cars could that building hold at one time?
I don't know.
Let me, if I can, interject perhaps, the, first of all, the hours of operation, the, the building height, by the way, is twenty-four feet, sorry. Thirty is the max in that zone, it's twenty-four feet tall. The number of, the times of operation, there'd be twelve to fifteen car carriers there, typically on Mondays, they leave starting at three thirty AM. And they hope to have the vehicles, carriers should be out by five to five thirty AM. They then go to the port of Baltimore, pick up cars generally from the port of Baltimore, then traverse up the eastern coast, they can stop back at the site. The driver sleeps overnight, comes back out again the next morning. Typically, they get back at sometime around eight o'clock from what my client tells me. So you usually don't see much happening there during the daytime. So the carriers are out on the road during that period of time. And how many cars can fit in the site? There would be five bay doors. So that somewhere, it's about seventy-eight hundred square feet of, of storage area. And they're talking about, most of these are luxury cars.
So, so going back to the hours of operation, it, it sounds like it could be a twenty-four by seven operation.
Well, they're not, they're not sleeping there, but I mean, it would probably be from three thirty AM to say eight or nine PM, correct?
And, and the last comment I have is on conditions of approval. And, you know, this, this was another site, obviously, in the watershed protection district. And I know Eric Kruger and other staff have made, you know, recommendations as far as what's required with the watershed protection district. But what I would like to actually see is, because they, they really don't, what I would like to see is actually section four dot one, three, section B included and all the conditions under B one, two, three, four, five, six through eight included because it talks about maintaining the Class A drinking water status. So I'd like to see that as a condition of approval. The, the notes from staff kinda talk about it and they, but I, I wanna have that specifically, you know, worded in there. So that, that's actually B dot one.
And I think that's fine. Let me, let me tell you too, that this is a very flat site.
Right.
So one of the difficulties was getting the sand filter designed to operate in the site because you need, you know, a certain amount of depth. And so there is a substantial amount of fill that will end up being brought into the site in order to make the sand filter work, but that's a requirement in your watershed area.
Yep. And then the last question is just, is there any type of, you know, storage containers for any type of hazardous material?
None that I'm aware of. Again, this, this is really just for the, the storage of the vehicles. The owner has a related company out on North Plains Industrial that'll still be operating. The fueling will take place, the maintenance, things of that sort. So there, other than storage, that's really what's anticipated for this location.
Okay, so maybe that could be an additional condition of approval, no, you know, hazardous materials stored inside. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cohen, I think in terms of the internal storage, just looking at the dimensions of it, trying to think about how many cars somebody could park in, in there in terms of the size on a typical parking space, I think you could probably put about thirty cars in the, in the storage area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Hine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may have gone over this earlier and I may have missed it. How many trips per day do we expect? For this particular site?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay. The cars, I, I was a little unclear as to the process for loading the cars. Do the cars get loaded inside? Do they get loaded outside? How, how does the loading process work?
Loading and unloading takes place in the back paved area behind the fence. So it's not inside, the car then drives into the storage facility.
Okay, so they're loaded and unloaded outside, correct?
The car carrier would drive straight into the west side, to the, to the back fence, unload from the back of the vehicle, and the cars would drive into the storage area and then reload the same way, make the movement that we're gonna establish with your town engineer so that can, then the vehicle, car carrier can go straight out onto Research.
You mentioned earlier that these drivers would start their day, I, I think you said sometime around three thirty AM, is that?
That's what I'm told by the client, yeah.
At that time, at three thirty AM, would they be loading cars onto a carrier? Or do they just leave the facility and go down to Baltimore, get the cars and bring them back?
You know, my suspicions are, and I don't know the specific answer, probably both, but more likely, again, they're going to the port of Baltimore earlier in the week. And when they come back, generally the carriers are empty. They've made all of their rounds, they've gone to the different locations. There may be a period of time when they come in midweek, if they haven't unloaded all of their vehicles and they're going further north, you know, beyond the state of Connecticut, that you could have that operation take place during the day.
Okay, because I assume that if we're storing, i- i- if the intent is to store vehicles at this facility, then when they start their day at three thirty in the morning, that there's gonna be times where they're loading those vehicles onto the truck.
Which is special too.
Okay. What type of noise does this type of operation produce in terms of loading, unloading from these carriers? Any, any idea?
I would think the noise of a car getting up and down a car carrier, I mean, I haven't.
Well, I, I assume that they're chained down onto these carriers and stuff like that. I mean, and so, you know, I, I suspect that it would produce some, some amount of noise at that time in the morning.
Correct.
Okay. These cars that are being transported, are they, you mentioned that they're luxury cars. Are they new cars, old cars, used cars?
All new cars.
All new cars, okay. Casey, I have a question for you on, on this, and that is, there's gonna be carriers being stored outside and, and, or left outside, is my understanding, correct? And I assume the carrier is not only the tractor, but the trailer as well, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Are you satisfied that they're, under the current plan, that there's enough cover or shading so, so that, you know, you can't see these trucks from the street?
They, the, the short answer is yes, in the sense that they have, so they, from Research, they have, the building will block part of the area. They also have a fence all the way around and it'll have privacy slats, so it shouldn't be visible. The maximum height will allow them to go with the fence is generally eight feet. So it'll be screened to that height. There is also, I mean, particularly from Research, it's where the, the carriers are is set, is very far back from the road, it's behind the building and you have landscaping required along Research on Thorpe Avenue. So they'll actually be closer to Thorpe Avenue, but they're still over a hundred and twenty feet back and they're still behind that fencing. Mr. Cohen, there's still, that was why I wanted to ensure that we have, that we're keeping the landscaping, that the trees that are existing on, on Thorpe Avenue was represented. So they've added the note to indicate that those will stay. And then Mr. Cohen suggested some evergreen planting. So if you wanted some additional kind of safety guard, if they were agreeable to some evergreen plantings along Thorpe, that would give that added protection.
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be a good idea, although this is, you know, certainly a use that's permitted in the zone to the extent that we can make it look nice from the street.
Sure.
I think that would be beneficial to everybody.
Yeah, and, and to that end, you do have in this zone a pretty significant front landscaping requirement, so that, that also helps, I think, a great deal to get there.
And there's not gonna be any excavation for this project, will there be?
No, I believe, as I said, there's some filling that's gonna be required, no excavation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hine. Other commission members, any questions? Anyone else? Mr. Allenson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have two quick questions. The lighting that's there, is that proposed to, my guess would be, when it gets dark, go on and stay on until it gets light? All of the lighting? Or is some of it going to relax during the off hours?
And I would, again, I don't know the answer. I would suspect though, it'll be on from sunset to sunrise, would be my guess.
Okay. The second question is, I'm looking at your letter which stated that there'll be twelve to fifteen trucks every Monday morning and return on Friday. And then I just heard there'd be about twelve to fifteen trucks per day. And I just wanted to clarify, I just wanted to clarify which it was. My, my understanding from the application is twelve to fifteen trucks come in on Monday, drop off cars, and then they get on the road and then they come back on Friday and then do it again on Monday, is that?
That's my understanding of the operation, that's correct.
So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, there's no trucks coming in, or Saturday, Sunday?
I don't believe there's any activity on the weekend. But I don't, you know, my understanding is that there is the potential of somebody who is making a trip from Baltimore to Maine, for example, of maybe staying and getting a nap in Wallingford and then going back out again in the morning.
I, I guess, you know, maybe I'm just, just not asking it right. I'm just trying to understand, you know, twelve to fifteen trips on Monday, twelve to fifteen trips on Friday, an average of twenty-four to thirty trips during the week, not twelve to fifteen trips per day?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I think I might have missed it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Allenson. Any other commission members with any questions? Mr. Matarazzo.
Just one question, and I apologize if it was covered, I can't seem to see or find the answer to it. As far as any intention of refueling on site?
I think that's one of the, potentially, if the applications would be approved, I think that's one of the conditions of approval, that there wouldn't be any, any applicants well aware of that while they may be going on at the, at the other site in town, that you're well aware that that's not allowed here. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, this is not a public hearing, but we always do allow members of the public to speak on any application. If there's anyone that'd like to come forward, make any comments on the application, please come forward, state your name and address. And we have, if I could, just a show of hands of who'd like to speak on the application. This gentleman here, and appears we have two individuals. Is that on?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Hi, my name is Robert Keselowski. I live on one seventeen Thorpe Avenue. I'm the street behind this. What it is worth concerning, we're residential. And their back door where they're gonna be loading is residential. I've been in trucking for forty-eight years, I know all about trucks. They make a lot of noise, three thirty in the morning, gonna wake up the neighborhood. They got air brakes, you got air dryers. If you ever hear a truck sitting there, you're gonna have sixteen trucks doing it at three thirty in the morning. A lot of people in that neighborhood got kids there, okay? You're gonna have diesel smoke. I know of this company, they're not gonna have fifteen trucks there in the same time. They're running over the road, there's an eleven hour driving curfew, then they're gonna be sleeping there. All these trucks got sleepers on them. They're gonna get there, they're out of hours, they have to shut down, it's DOT regulation. They can't move. So they are gonna be sleeping there. So I know about this business, been doing it for forty years. So our concern is, I think there should be a sound barrier on Thorpe Avenue. Try to keep the noise away because just a regular fence ain't gonna stop that noise or the smoke from the diesels if you've got sixteen trucks during the morning firing up. You're gonna hear a lot of noise at three thirty in the morning, you're gonna have a lot of smoke in there if you're firing diesels up. So it's something to consider. You're gonna need a better, a better barrier, something there.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Excuse me, if I could, this, this is not an entertainment venue. So if we could just please, just, you know, hold, just hold your applause, let everyone speak. And we don't need to clap after every, I, I understand. If, if people would like to come and express their opinion, you're certainly welcome to come and express your opinion. Yes, gentlemen, please, name an address.
Name is Will Brennan. I live at seventy-five Thorpe Ave, which is right across the street from this. Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
So I, well, I would like to second Bob's sort of question about a sound barrier. And just to add context to that, I, I have a two-year-old and a nine-month-old. So in terms of hours of operation, that could be problematic. And I do have neighbors adjacent to me who also have very young children, where that could be a thing. I believe I heard a comment made that there would be no exiting or entering through Thorpe Avenue. I'm wondering if that does apply during the construction period? I'm wondering if that does apply during the construction period? Um, because I, I did, I did watch them clear that plot where they had a makeshift driveway for vehicles coming in and out of Thorpe. Um, so during this construction, would that be taking place? Would they be bringing in the, the loads that you're referring to?
We'll get an answer for you that, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, hi. My name is Scott Gray and I live at fourteen Oxford Trail in Wallingford, Connecticut. And, um, I just wanted to thank Mr. Commissioner Allison for, um, trying to pin down the number of vehicles that might be, um, coming and going from that site. So it is, it is very important to know whether twenty-four or thirty-two trucks will be coming in per week or per day. Because we don't want a lot of trucks coming in there, and I appreciate that Commissioner Allison has been, that took, Commissioner Allison took the time to focus on that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Meha Maniar, nine ten M Hill Road. I just have a quick question. We mentioned that there is another business uh, for the same applicant across town at North Plains Industrial. I'm wondering, um, if the maintenance and all of that is not gonna take care, be taken care of at this new location, how many cars are gonna go back and forth in town so that they can go to that other location, get their maintenance done, get their fuels done, whatever they need to get done, and come back to the storage area? So...
So the question would be as far as the vehicles that are being stored within the building, is that correct?
Exactly. The vehicles that are being stored that need maintenance will have to keep going back and forth to the other location. Does that add traffic to the town commute and the town itself? That would be my question. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Betul Patel, thirteen nineteen Durham Road. Um, so I understand that you could park about thirty-five cars?
I believe they've indicated it was what, thirty-five, uh, or so cars within the building?
So there is a possibility you could quadruple that number by u- using lifts. So I don't know if that, that's been brought up before, but just throwing it out there.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none? Guess I would go back to, uh, the applicant here. As far as, gentleman had the question on Thorpe Avenue, as far as any activity during the construction, certainly not, uh, once, if this application were to be approved, uh, there wouldn't be any access to Thorpe Avenue. But during the, uh, during the construction or any activity going on on the property, is there going to be any access onto Thorpe Avenue?
Uh, I'm, I'm told that, uh, the subdivision approval was specific in not permitting any access on Thorpe. So there will be none during the course of construction, or certainly you can tell from the site plan proposal, there is no access as part of the operation should this be approved.
And as far as maintenance of the vehicles that are being stored in the, uh, in the building? I know you'd indicated that they were new vehicles, but there's, I guess, always the possibility of some maintenance, uh, that would be required, not within the, within the building, but within the applicant's other facility. Uh, do you see that as an issue, or do you see that taking place?
I don't, Mr. Chairman, only because, again, he doesn't, the applicant won't own those vehicles. He transports those vehicles. He doesn't have an obligation for maintenance, just to transport.
Okay.
It, it was a condition of staff. They wanted to make sure there was no maintenance, no fueling, no washing, and we've agreed to all of that.
Sure. And any, uh, you, you feel that the applicant may or may not be contemplating using lifts? Again, gentleman indicated that, uh, you know, with lifts, you could perhaps store double the number of vehicles. Is there any, would you know if the applicant has any thought toward that?
I've not been told that. I've nev- not heard that during the course of my representation of it.
Okay. And then the final thing, and I guess I would, if you talk perhaps with, with Mrs. Hand first, concerning, you know, one of the speakers mentioned the idea of a, uh, you know, of a sound barrier. I guess I'd like your thoughts on that, please.
Um, okay, so this is not a special permit. It's a permitted use in the zone. It's a site plan application. It's not a major traffic generator according to your zoning regulations. So your level of discretion and your ability to impose conditions of approval, um, well, you still, you still have the ability to impose conditions of approval um, if they're, um, related to some of the components as laid out in your site plan application. But your level of discretion is a lot lower. Um, in this particular situation, there's a noise ordinance. They have to comply with the noise ordinance. Um, the noise ordinance does speak to, um, the noise generation in, this is an industrial zone. So this, it does speak to the ability to cross from how much noise you can generate between an industrial zone and a residential zone. Um, however, for properties that are in the industrial zone, um, again, there's, there are still noise ordinance restrictions, um, but they are different. Um, so I, I, I mean, you could see what the applicant might be willing to provide. You do have, you did discuss landscaping that would provide some sound barrier. Um, but the noise ordinance is the, um, is, is the, the leading, uh, regulation here.
Thank you. Guess I bring you back to the applicant. You've heard some concerns with respect to that. If you'd provide me with some comments or insight into, uh, into that.
I think in terms of, first of all, you've got the landscaping plan, as pointed out, and, and there was a request, and, and certainly the, the applicant is fine with adding additional evergreens or additional landscaping. A- as you can tell from the site plan, the distance is, um, significant from, um, the developed area. The developed area is really research parkway, parkway back. Um, the other part of the lot, a hundred feet or so, a hundred and twenty feet back to Thorpe Avenue is going to remain native. It's gonna remain the way that it's, it's currently existing, again, with some additional, uh, trees. And I happen to agree, I mean, I, I do agree with your planner. At the end of the day, um, in this IX zone, which anticipates as a permitted use, you know, the existence of some truck traffic with warehouse space, um, the owner or any applicant is going to have to comply with your sound ordinance.
Thank you. Can I bring it back to the commission? I know that there was a, uh, some discussion as far as just the turning radius and whether we would, uh, want to have, uh, prior to taking, I'll lay back up, uh, if we would want prior to taking any action on this application, if we'd like to have those turning radiuses, uh, discussed with our, uh, with our town engineer to make certain that in fact it's, uh, the site works from that. So I just ask the commission as far as what their feeling is on that.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I, I would, uh, say that we're not ready to take action on this. I, I definitely think the town engineer should be involved in, in confirming in a, in a field visit of the site, that, uh, car carriers we're all familiar with, and they're quite large, and, and making sure they can keep everything on the site makes perfect sense prior to action.
Thoughts from anyone else? Mr. Cohen, then we'll go to Mr. Hine.
Yes, I'll, I'll agree with, uh, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, uh, echo those, those concerns. I think you're always better to be safe than sorry, so.
And we see Mr. Walter Midas is in the, uh, in the audience. I assume he has no problem, uh, before the next, uh, before the next, uh, meeting to, uh, meet with the applicant, uh, to discuss those, the turning radius and that issue. With that, if, Mr. Matarazzo?
Uh, I also wonder if we shouldn't get clarification as to whether or not there's any intention of, um, adding lifts to the building?
Yeah, seeing that you gentlemen are going to be, ladies and gentlemen are going to be coming back to, uh, to us next month. If you could, uh, follow up with your, uh, with your client to see if in fact there's any consideration to having lifts in the building.
Will do.
Anyone else? Anything else? Mrs. Hand, anything else on this application?
Uh, I need you to give me one second to check the timing.
Sure.
Okay, um, I believe, and, um, I can see if Attorney Sanneviva's math concurs with mine, but I don't think we're in a position to postpone the application, to continue the application further. Uh, with a site plan, you only have sixty-five days and, uh, an extension of up to another hundred and sixty-five. So that would put them up to a hundred and thirty days to max out their statutory time. Um, and the application was submitted on September seventh.
So what's our math? Tell us.
So our math is telling us that we needed a, a decision.
So is, is this, let me ask you this question. Is tonight the, uh...
They're out of time.
This is the final date?
Yeah.
Or final time? Mr. Sanneviva, do you, uh, agree with our math?
I would also comment that, um, with site plan, which are by right applications, um, the discretion lies with whether or not there's general compliance with the regulations one way or the other. Again, we're not at a special permit here.
Okay, thank you. So gentlemen, it's back to us. Any comments from any commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Mr. Chairman, if I understand correctly from the town planner, the applicant applied September seventh. We're out of time. Vote needs to be happened this evening on this application, or they could withdraw and reapply. Is that correct? Those are the two options?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right, then, Mr. Chairman, in, in light of the, um, the last issue that you raised, i- i- is the, the truck turning, that the turning radii of the car carrier is, is a big issue. But I acknowledge this, it's a site plan, you know? I, I don't know why, you know, other large applicants or other applicants with tractor trailers come in with the, the schematic showing us how the truck will fit on the site, or, you know, I don't know why it's not here. I don't know why it's not part of this. Um, i- it can be a condition of approval, but it's, it's, it's difficult. And I, I guess, I, I guess if I could through you, Mr. Chairman, just ask the applicant and their representative, um, again, to get, get this on the record. So all car carrying, all car trucks, all, all the trucks, all the trucks with the cars would be on your site?
Say that again, please.
Thanks, Ross. No, I mean, all the car carriers would be, would, would, all, all the activity would happen on your site?
Yes, they, yes.
Okay, and your belief is that you have the room on your site to do everything that you need to, to, with having the parking for twelve to fifteen car carriers and the maneuverability, that everything will be able to happen onsite?
That was the desired outcome of the applicant, because he wants to be able to do all of that within that fenced-in area for security reasons, because of the new cars that he's carrying.
I mean, there's, and, and if I, knowing the site, and, and, you know, there's no room for, there's no margin for error, because there's no room for other car carriers, because it's gonna impact your ability to maneuver on that site. I mean, I know it's like juggling cars in a driveway. I, I can only imagine what it's like maneuvering car carriers in a site when there's already fifteen cars or fifteen, uh, up to fifteen other car carriers on the site.
Right, that was, that was why you wanted this particular size area.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I might, maybe as a condition of approval prior to issuance of any building permit CO, they're required to show the schematic that we asked for prior to taking action. To be reviewed by the, yeah, town engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Anyone else that would like to comment? Yes, Mr. Hine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have you done the calculations at all to figure out, um, whether there is enough room, um, to make those turns onsite?
We have not done the calculations, no. The, we have used, we have gone by the practical experience of the owner of the company who drives these vehicles on a daily basis. And he was the one who informed us the area that he needed for his operation. Um, we have tried to find some templates for car carriers. The problem is that there are many different styles of car carriers, so there is no one particular template that you can say, as you can for, for example, a UPS truck or, um, an eighteen-wheeler. Those are standard. Car carriers are not standard, so you'd have to probably have a template for each one. So that was where we thought, using the car carriers that the applicant has, the practicality, practical solution would be to have a demonstration with his car carrier and him driving it to demonstrate that does in fact work.
And, and I appreciate that, but you just, the, the problem that I have is that if he, if he demonstrates with one, um, if, as you say, there's, um, car carriers can be many different sizes, um, then if he demonstrates with one, that may not be sufficient for a different, uh, uh, carrier. Um, I, I assume that you know sort of the range or the sizes of these carriers, and if you obviously did the calculation with the largest carrier that you use, um, I, I'd be a little more comfortable, I guess, i- if, um, calculations were done with the largest carrier that you use so that we were sure that there was enough room, um, to make that turn. Uh...
I, I, I had another thought. Um, if the commission is not comfortable acting tonight, what we could do, again, because it's a site plan application, we don't have to worry, we don't have to run a legal notice, so the timing is a little bit different. Um, if the applicant was in cl- you know, was agreeable, they could withdraw tonight. We could resubmit it as an application, but we could put it right on for next month's agenda. Again, because it's not a special permit, we don't have to run, do the notices and that kind of thing. Um, and you could, uh, because part of the reason, frankly, that this didn't get addressed to her is because I was out. Um, so, um, you know, I, I, it was outside of my control, but it, it is what it is, so that did impact them. So, um, we could do that, and you could waive the new application fee, and then that would give them the opportunity to address your concerns without putting it back two more months.
Thank you, Mrs. Hand. I think that's a reasonable solution. I guess I would turn it over to the applicant to see if, uh, the applicant would be, uh, would be willing to do that.
I, I think that's a reasonable resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Good, okay. So you formally withdraw the application?
We'll see you next month.
And then we'll, uh, provided you resubmit it. And, uh, and also, uh, again, you know as far as what the task is with our engineering department?
The filing fee is waived, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, I believe we're all agreeable to that. Is that correct? To waive the, Mr. Menard?
It is my understanding that the maximum length of a trailer truck is eighty feet. So you probably could look into that and use that as a criteria.
Thank you.
I'm sure our town engineer also has some, uh, some thoughts on that. So with that, you're applicant, you've withdrawn the application, and, uh, we will, uh, most likely see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it brings us up to our, uh, jumping back to our, top of our agenda, actually, which is, uh, Old Business, which is, uh, item number two. It's a special permit. It's for Five Research Parkway, Wallingford LLC at Five Research Parkway. This is a, uh, it's a continuation of the, uh, you know, of the application. Uh, we closed the public hearing last month after the third public meeting that the commission held on the, uh, on the application. You know, this evening, the commission is going to discuss the application amongst itself and will eventually take action on the application. You know, as the public hearing is closed, the commission will not be entertaining any additional comments from the applicant or from the public. You know, the commission will not be allowed, additionally, the commission will not be allowed to ask uh, any additional questions of the applicant. You know, the town's corporate counsel indicated that the town planner may provide the commission with a report or comments as long as it is based upon evidence in the public record. Commission members can ask the town planner to review comment and give an opinion concerning the application, provided it's based upon... the application, provided it's based upon evidence in the public record and is not done, you know, as a conduit for the applicant or the opponents. You know, the five members of the commission, and it's only, it's only five members of the commission who will be voting on the application are the only ones who can comment on the application and engage in a discussion with other voting members concerning the application. You know, at this point, I'd like to thank Mrs. Han, our town planner, and all the other departments, you know, who've reviewed the application and provided their respective comments and suggestions. You know, I believe the review has been very comprehensive of what is certainly a very, I think we can all agree, is a very complex application. I'd also like to thank the public, you know, for his participation, the comments, the concerns, the observations, the suggestions that it offered to the commission and the applicant during the public hearing. On all applications, you know, the participation of the public's encouraged by the commission. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank the applicants representative for the professional manner in which they interacted with the town staff. All in all, I believe that this has been a very open and transparent process. You know, as chair, chairperson of the commission, I do want to apologize to other members of the commission for not being able to attend any of the prior three meetings on this application, as I was either out of state or out of the country on business or vacations. You know, I have reviewed the videos of the three meetings and the 14 to 15 hours of the meetings, as well as reviewed all the information presented, you know, for the record. The town's corporate council indicated that by doing so, I could vote on the application. You know, as much as I would like to participate in discussion and vote on the application, I don't feel that that would be appropriate as not being at any of the meetings. That didn't present me with the opportunity to, to question the applicant as well as to ask questions with various town staff. You know, as a result, I'm designating Mr. Allison an alternate on this commission, you know, who's attended all three of the meetings to replace me in order to participate in the discussion and to vote on the application. You know, I'd also like to make it very clear for the record that I have had absolutely no discussions with Mr. Allison or any other members of this commission concerning the application or my opinion on the application. And before I turn the meeting over to Mr. Madarasso to ask him to act as the acting chairperson for the application, you know, I'd just like to request that everybody in attendance, you know, please refrain from, you know, any outbursts or any loud comments while the commission is discussing and ultimately voting on the application. You know, I all, I think we all realize that this is, you know, this is not a popularity contest, and whatever action the commission takes on an application, it's required to be based upon the commission's determination whether or not the ultimate approval or the ultimate denial of any application conforms or does not conform, you know, to the town zoning regulations. So that being said, I will ask Mr. Madarasso to essentially take the wheel and act as acting chairperson for this, for this application. Mr. Madarasso, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I want to do first is read in a memorandum to Casey Hantown Planner from Janus Small Corporation Council dated January 8th, 2019. With that said, would any of the commissioners like to make any comments regarding this application? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, I would just like to reiterate that I believe it was the, either the first or second hearing, I made it clear on the record that I do live in the area of the planned of the proposal. I've been at all of these meetings. I do not feel that there's any conflict of interest or bias from my living there. I just felt that it would be appropriate that I make that once again clear, both to the commission, the staff, and to the public and the applicant, that that is the case, even though I think I was clear the last time. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to confirm, I'd like to designate who's going to be voting on the application. Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Who are we voting?
I designate Mr. Allison.
He designated Mr. Allison, so Mr. Allison, Mr. Menard, Mr. Fitzsimmons, and Mr. Cohen, and myself. And commissioners on this side, any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just before I get into questions, I just want to confirm that I was not at the last meeting, the December 10th meeting. Ironically, I was driving a diesel truck through New Jersey on my way home from Florida, bringing my son. But I did review the five and a half hour meeting, and of course, I've gone through the information. So I just want to get that on the record.
Very good, thank you. Any other commissioners?
I was on this board when the Empressa Myers came in. I've been on this board for 20 years, 22 years. So I know pretty well what's going on in this situation. So this is pretty well where I'm coming from. So whatever.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioners?
Go ahead, Chuck. I, I just, since we're all just stating for the record, I've been at all the meetings, I've received all the documentation, and I've got, I went through, I did all my homework, so I'm prepared to vote.
Very good, thank you. With that said, there's one item I'd like to bring up for some clarification. Mrs. Han? This is regarding the traffic analysis. Clarification on truck traffic via the traffic analysis dated July 2018, revised September 2018.
Okay, so what's, what's on, on the record, what's in your traffic analysis, is there is, there are two graphics in there. They're labeled hourly traffic volumes for warehousing, and one is for, listed as for warehouse one, and one is for listed as for warehouse two. And at the bottom of those, you'll note the references, ITE Trip Generation 10th Edition, LUC 150 in Appendix A, page 176, In-N-Out Estimated. What those are telling you is what the estimated total vehicle trip generation is per the ITE, which is your traffic standard. So what the total vehicle trip generation projected is based on the ITE book for each of the warehouses. So again, total vehicles, not specific to trucks, is 1060 for warehouse one for the, for peak, for the day, and 772 for warehouse two for the day. So that puts you at a little over 1,800 projected trips. The representation made in the traffic study, and it is in that traffic analysis, and it is referenced in some of the back and forth and some of your other documentation between the peer reviewer and the applicant's traffic engineer, is about a, that heavy vehicle percentages were estimated to be at 30% for the morning peak hour and 20% for the afternoon peak hour. That's also on page, hold on. Well, I paint one, two, three, four. Page four, under trip generation comparison. They, the analysis explains that there's limited information on peak hour trip, truck trip generation, and then they used a representation also from the ITE, from High Cube Warehouse Vehicle Trip Generation Analysis Prepared in 2016 by ITE for the South Coast Air Quality Management District and National Association of Industrial and Office Parks, which suggests that trucks make up about 30% of morning peak hour, 20% of afternoon peak hour, and 33% of daily trips at warehouses. So if you take that 1,800, that was total projected vehicle trips, 33% daily, 33% of that is about 600, a little, just over, just over 600. So, and an in is a trip and an out is a trip, so 600 would be, if, if every truck had an in and an out, that'd be about 300 trucks per day. So I think that's what was represented on the record, and that's where those numbers came from. So just to clarify what, what exactly those numbers are representing, are actually representing.
Very good, thank you. With that said, I guess I'll just bring it back one more time to the commission for, Mr. Allison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also have just one question for our town planner. I rewatched some of the public hearing from both November and December, and the town's traffic engineer, he stated on the record that his study was based on the numbers that were generated by the applicant's engineer, and that he also used the industry standards of the warehouse. And part of this was actually a piece that Mr. Fitzsimmons had brought up, where there was, there was a warehouse type trip, there are other type of classifications, but they didn't have a classification for like a FedEx or a UPS or a postal delivery type, type warehouse. And so I guess my question is, is in these types of studies, when we, when there's an independent traffic analysis done, is it typical that the numbers are, that the data that's used is the applicant's data? Or is it typical that the independent garners their own data?
The town engineer could probably answer that a little bit better than I can. What I will say, if, if he's comfortable answering that question, I mean, what I would say is typically there, it's a peer review, so they're reviewing the data as presented as to whether or not they find the methodology appropriate and the, the data, you know, whether or not the, the appropriate standards were used. So that's, that's kind of the standard, but Mr. Baltermitis contracts with the, I don't know, do you want to comment any further on that?
Good evening, Commissioners. So Casey, I think that answer is exactly right. So what the, what the town consultant was hired to do was to prepare a peer review of the applicant's study. So in a peer review, you're going to look at the elements, you're going to look at their assumptions, their methodologies, and make sure that they are using acceptable practices in the transportation engineering field. And, and that's what they told you at the end of the day. But it does not rise to the level of an independent study. So you, this commission did not hire Mr. Clury from CDM Smith to do an independent traffic study. He did a peer review of the applicant's study.
Thank you. Now I, now I understand kind of a little bit where the testimony was coming from. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start out with several questions about procedure. And my, my first question has to do with the nature of a special permit. And several residents brought this up, and, you know, every time we have a meeting and something comes up, I always go back to the regulations. I always learn something new, and I've been here for, for a while now. But my first question is, this is a special permit, and during the conversation, the commentary was that the special permit was triggered by traffic, which, yes, I will agree with that. However, there are several other criteria involved with, you know, determining whether something's a special permit. And those are size and intensity, noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, unusual topography, character of the neighborhood. And I would argue that this application meets those specific criteria. So what I'm asking is, you know, why did we focus on traffic? And according to the regulations, it's the commission shall consider and evaluate the criteria. And I may have asked this question before, but, you know, this commission really did not evaluate the criteria. You know, this special permit was put on the agenda without any input into this commission as far as, you know, what that criteria was. So I kind of like a comment on, on how that came about.
Okay, so I, I think I'm going to answer the second part first, if that makes sense. I, I think what, and I'm not sure if this under, if this answers it or not, so tell me if it doesn't. Your ability, or your process in considering the special permit is the special permit process. So your, your consideration is done as part of the application process. So it's applied, and that's, the application is submitted. That's your opportunity to consider the elements of the special permit. Does that, so it's, it's first determined whether, you know, in, in your zoning regulations, so in this case, in the IX zone, you have a certain list of permitted uses, a certain list of special permit uses, and they fall under one of those categories, and there's an application associated with that. And then that's, that's how it comes before you for your consideration. The second part of that, so in the special permit section, section 7.5, it's a list of criteria for evaluating a special permit. Commission shall consider and evaluate each and every application for a special permit by applying at a minimum the following criteria. Now, in this particular situation, you have a use that's listed as a permitted, a site plan by right use, not a special permit. Sometimes you have special permit uses where, so for example, dealership and repair's license are always special permit uses, and it means the commission has determined in writing your zone, you know, in going through your plan of conservation and development and writing your zoning regulations that you've considered, okay, there are some uses that are always allowed, and there are some uses that we're always going to want to consider on a case-by-case basis and apply these special permit criteria. What you've also done in, in your regs is to decide that anything that is a substantial traffic generator, so over 100 peak hour vehicle trips, and that's, that's in every zone, automatically triggers a special permit, and you actually have, the regulations actually have additional criteria, as you know, affiliated with that, the traffic analysis, the potential to require the peer review, and so on. So in evaluating the criteria listed in the special permit section, when we're talking about a by right use that's triggered by, where the special permit is triggered by the traffic generation, some of those, some of those considerations have already been decided, when you decided to allow it as a, as a by right use in the zone, as a permitted use in the zone. So if the traffic is the component that triggers the special permit and say warehousing is a permitted use in the zone, it's already been determined that warehousing is a permitted use in the zone. So if there were an issue... zone. Um, so if there were an issue where the traffic or sort of the intensity associated with that traffic contributed to some of these other considerations, I would say those are, those are relevant considerations. Where they're related to the use itself, the use specifically, it's all, it's, it's already been decided by the commission when they made it a by right use. Does that?
Um, yes and no. Um, and I, I don't, um, you know, again, this came into, you know, us as a special permit and it was already determined that, yes, the traffic generation triggered it as a special permit. And, and again, when that came before us the first time is what you're saying, that we as a commission at that point should have said that, well, you know, the size and intensity of this, the, the noise, the, the smoke, the unusual topography, the, um, character of the neighborhood also apply. And is that where we as a commission make that further determination that applies to the special permit?
What I'm saying is that those are only relevant considerations for a special permit application. And that in this particular, in situations where traffic triggers the special permit, s- some of those issues as they relate to the use are all, are pre-decided because the use is permitted. The use is not what's triggering the special permit. So if it were, for example, if you had, um, an application before you that did not, if you had an application, let's use a different, a different permitted use in the IX zone. Give me one sec.
Well, you know, Casey, we are, we are talking about the warehouse. So, you know, let's focus on that.
Okay. Okay. So let's talk about a, a warehouse. If you had an application before you for a warehouse that didn't trigger the one hundred peak hour vehicle trips, if it was a smaller warehouse and per the IT, that's your, your guide in there, that didn't trigger a hundred peak hour vehicle trips, it's already, it's a permitted use in the zone. It would be a by right use. It would be a site plan application. You can't, you do not have the option to impose a special permit requirement on that. If you think that warehousing should always be a special permit requirement and should always be considered on a case-by-case basis, it would need to be listed, you would need to have in your regulations that it's a special permit use, not a site plan use, not a by right use.
Right. I'm, I'm, I'm still, um, I don't know, ob- objecting to, um, the, the way it was brought up as a special permit. I don't, um, I, I will agree that the warehouse is a, um, you know, use that is allowed in this zone. I, I'm not questioning that at all. It's just, I'm questioning the criteria that, you know, we applied to the special permit. And again, the regulations leave, um, room for interpretation, in my opinion, about, you know, how it gets, you know, on our agenda as a special permit. But, but let me ask a little differently because, um, e- even though the traffic generated the special permit, that does not negate us or prevent us from talking about what this commission would also consider other, you know, criteria within this, this special permit. Again, the size and the, the character of the neighborhood. I mean, you know, my, I think my objection is that every meeting we had, you know, it was specifically mentioned that this is, you know, uh, traffic, you know, that's the criteria we're dealing with. But, you know, again, my, my point is that this commission did not, um, i- i- we did not discuss the criteria. It's, yeah, the generation, traffic generation is in the regs. So are the other, um, criteria. It, my, my misunderstanding is that we as a commission did not evaluate all the criteria. And again, the regulations, um...
So if, if, if it had been submitted as a site plan application, eh, for a smaller warehouse that didn't trigger the special permit, you, the, the special permit criteria would not be applicable. Are we, is that, are we on the same page?
Yeah, I got that. Yep.
Okay. So the, the maybe question or discrepancy is whether or not the other criteria in the special permit section are applicable. And, and I would say that they're applicable as they relate to the special permit component of the application.
Okay. So to clarify, that criteria we can use, you know, for our decision?
Yes. But I would say as it, I would say as it relates to the special permit component of the application, which is triggered by the trip generation. So relating it to the use in and of itself would not be appropriate because the use is already de- eh, is already determined to be acceptable in the zone.
Excuse me. This is, uh, we, we need to, um, keep it down in the audience, please. This is a discussion between the commissioners.
So certainly, I mean, y- you, you can, I'm, I'm providing you with what I think is appropriate guidance. And you can, there are also, I mean, we would go back to, and, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, there are site plan criteria that you can consider as well. And so those would be applicable certainly for discussion and it, with the site plan. There are conditions you can oppose. There, there are considerations you can, you can apply. When the special permit is triggered by, by the trip generation, I, 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 I think I, I understand what you're getting at. But when the special permit is imposed by the trip generation, certainly you can talk about those things, but it wouldn't be appropriate to base them, to tie them back to the use in and of itself because the use is all, as a basis for, say, a denial, because the use is already pre-decided as an acceptable use in the zone. But you could consider them as they tie into the special permit component. So in, in many ways, there are probably interrelationships between, between a lot of those components. And, and it, as they interrelate to one another, certainly that'd be appropriate to, to consider.
So, so if, if I want to say that, um, based on the special permit where I feel the size and intensity, um, you know, criteria, even though this is a permitted use, that is a, uh, factor I can base my decision on.
Are you talking about the size and intensity of the traffic generation? Or are you, because if this were...
No, the, the permitted use.
Because if this were a warehouse that didn't have traffic generation, if, if say, I mean, if it were a permitted use that didn't have traffic generation, again, you wouldn't have triggered the special permit. So those, those criteria are not reasons listed as reasons for denial. They're listed as reasons for consideration. And some of them have already been determined. I mean, you can say whatever you want. I, I...
Yes. Um, oh, okay.
I mean, honestly, you're the, you are the commission and ultimately, but, but what I'm saying is, is that to say that i- if you had an application for something very of large building in and of itself, you would not have triggered those special permit considerations.
Okay.
But you might, oh, sorry. You might feel that there was a relationship between, like I said, between some of those components.
Okay. Um, yeah, not to, not to, I, because I still have a lot of other stuff I want to talk about. Um, but I think that, um, the way this is worded in our regulations, again, leaves a lot of, um, interpretation on how this is submitted. And, you know, quite honestly, I, like I said, I, I learn something every time, you know, I have to go back and look at the regulations. And, um, it, 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 you, there should be, in, in, again, in my opinion, the way it's worded in the regulations, these other considerations should have triggered a special permit, even though this is a, a regulated, you know, allowed use. Um, so...
Maybe the town attorney wants to provide input on that.
Well, maybe we could, you know, take that offline. Um, because I, I, I'd like to, you know, just continue. Um, but I, I think the, um, uh, regulations really need to be looked at, um, for what I'm saying. Um, okay. So the next thing, again, in, um, our regulations is, um, notification of a public hearing. And, you know, for a special permit or, you know, public hearing, you've got to have, uh, signs erected on all, uh, streets around, you know, the, the property. And, um, my question is, was that done? I know that there was a sign out front, but did we have a sign on each of the streets around the property?
There was one on Research. I can't remember if there was one on Carpenter Lane or not. I believe there was.
Okay. Um, so basically, and, and we, we've never followed this since I've been sitting on the commission. Um, but again, in our regulations, with notification of public hearing, and this is section seven dot five, dot D, dot one, dot B, um, there has to be a report from the zoning enforcement office attesting that the signs were erected. And failure of the applicant to comply may be grounds for automatic denial. So did we attest that we had signs around the...
We didn't. No.
Um, all right. It, in, the, the, the next things I want to talk about, um, is it too late at this point to, um, talk about conditions of approval? Add conditions of approval?
I, you, you can, in the motion, you can certainly, I mean, especially amongst yourselves as voting members, you can certainly add conditions of approval.
Okay. So I, I will just bring up a couple of conditions of approval that I, you know, I'd like to see if we move forward.
Um, maybe before we do that, can I interject on something? Maybe we should get, um, Janice's input regarding the attesting of the signage. Where, where would that put us?
Well, I, I don't know if the signs were posted or not. I mean, um, one commissioner shook his head to Carpenter's lines. That was on Carpenter's...
It's my recollection. I've driven around the property, uh, multiple times. And it's my recollection that there was a sign on Carpenter and there was a sign on Research. I did not see a sign on sixty-eight. But I don't know that there was one.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'd have to check the rule of, see what was required and some...
Required on sixty-eight.
Sometimes these are jurisdictional and sometimes they're not. So I, on the spot, I can't give you an answer on that.
Without knowing that, is that something we can move forward with as far as this application?
Yep.
I mean, if you want this to be a verbal report, it can be what's been discussed on the record.
Yeah. Can we, um, can we turn the, uh, volume off on the phones, please? Um, I think Mr. Fitzsimmons got a comment.
Mr. Chairman, in response to your, your last question, quite frankly, we're out of time. We, we have to vote. And, and, and so I, I agree with Commissioner Cohen. And I do recall that the, the, the old days, um, we used to get a report and it was part of the record that the town planner, assistant planner would say, "I witnessed the sign. I saw the sign." You're right. I didn't see it here, but I did see the signs when I went to go visit the site. But in going forward, in order to correct and address it, it should be part of our staff function for any special permit, that there be a written documentation in the record. Right? That would, that would address that issue.
That, that's what our regs say. Yes.
All right. Um, all right, Mr. Cohen. Continue.
Um, thank you. Yeah, just, um, you know, again, I, I just want to, you know, thi- this is a really complex, big application. And I just want to make sure that all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed. And, you know, I, 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 I got to give credit to the town staff and the applicant, applicant, because, um, there has been so much work, good work, I think, put into, you know, ensuring just about everything that could crop up, um, you know, was, uh, talked about, was brought up. Um, you know, there were remedies to, you know, a lot of issues and concerns. And, you know, I think Casey, Rob and Eric did a great job in, you know, dotting the i's, crossing the t's. And the applicant, I think, you know, did a lot as far as, you know, they're engineers and, and things. Anyway, um, but I, I went through Casey's conditions of approval. I just wanted to add a couple of things. Um, again, I brought this up at, um, the last one where this is in a watershed protection district. And I just want to make sure that we have section four dot one, three, dot dash B one, where it talks about the, um, complying with the Connecticut Water Quality Standards. You know, Casey's, one of Casey's memos has Eric Kruger, um, one of his memos, you know, as a COA. But what he did was he, he left out this wording because he kind of rolled up, you know, the following day. And I, the one I would like to see is October fifth, you know, that, that verbiage. And it really just specifies that section. He left that out of the, the further memos that, uh, uh, he supplied to Casey and which are conditions of approval. So I'd, I'd like to see that. Um, and then in, um, section C dot six, th- there needs to be a, a written permit signed by the water division and fire, um, about any, you know, storage containers. And that has to be, there, there was, there, there's a lot of miniscule, um, you know, impacts in these conditions of approval. And I just want to make sure that, you know, some of the, uh, in my opinion, eh, you know, more important ones, well, they're all important, you know, are, are specified in the conditions of approval. Um, you know, no salt on, on the pavement, I think is, you know, a critical one. Um, and again, it is worded in, um, you know, Eric Kruger's memo, but, you know, there's a lot of information in there. And how do we, um, ensure that all of this is done? Um, you know, there, people are going to laugh at this one, but, you know, there, there's, uh, uh, consideration during construction for, you know, taking care of the box turtles they come across and, and, you know, the site, you know, who's, who's going to, um, you know, follow up on things like that? And one of the, uh, you know, conditions of approval is I'd like to actually see if we can add, um, the responsibilities of the, the, the site monitor to, to look at. And, and maybe, you know, these things are included is, you know, what the site monitor's uh, responsibility is going to be. And, um, uh, you know, it, it sounds like the site monitor will be, you know, again, paid for by the applicant, but we will have the hiring, uh, pro, the capability, we will do the hiring of, you know, who that person is based on. the capability, we will do the hiring of, you know, who that person is, based on, you know, what I, I've read and.
Yeah, the, the site monitor would work for, or on behalf of the town and, and town staff.
But, but we get to hire that person?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'd also like to add that we include the, it, it's not really a condition of approval, but the sound study by Aaron Farbo, twelve, seven, twenty eighteen, you know, he spoke about, you know, the noise coming from the, the property will not be a problem. They will meet all the standards. You know, I'd like to have that, you know, included as, you know, I think it was actually line twenty-four, where Casey mentioned the site will comply with the noise ordinance, if we could, you know, according to, you know, Aaron Farbo's memo dated twelve, seven, twenty eighteen. And I didn't see the September nineteenth perennial contingency plan as a condition of approval. And I think what I read in that is standards on diesel exhaust, you know, the, the tractor trailer, you know, turning off the engine, the idling. There were five or six standards in there that dealt with how the, the tractor trailers have to be, you know, kept on site, and I, I, I'd like to see that memo added as well. You know, September nineteenth perennial contingency plan. And I, I think that the last thing was a bond. I don't recall us specifying, you know, a bond. I think that, you know, early on, we talked about sharing a bond with inland wetlands. But I don't know if, if this commission has determined, you know, an appropriate amount. So I, and if I'm wrong, let me know.
Casey, do you reiterate on that?
No, so what I would recommend here, which we've done in the past, is that I do, I have a set way that I calculate the bond amount that's based, or that I calculate the typical bond amount that's based on, you know, a certain amount for every said basin, a certain amount for every linear foot of, of silt fence for every linear foot of hay bale, and, and we, so usually I make that determination, and the commission has allowed me to do that in the past. We did talk, and, and I think it was listed in my, or referenced in my conditions, or my recommended conditions, that the bond amount would be, would be to be determined, and that we would, the discussion was that we would, the inland wetlands commission has a recommended, has a, a required bond amount, and that there would be an allowance for, it, it wouldn't take away any of your jurisdictional authority over the bond, but that it would be a bond where they wouldn't end up posting twice for things that are, things that are the same. So you would both have authority over that, over the full amount of your bond. But that the bond wouldn't end up, essentially, there wouldn't be double dipping with the bond.
So, ha- has an, an amount been determined?
They did determine a bond. I did not recommend a bond amount yet. Sometimes I wait until we have final plans for that.
So, so again, is that something we have to, or are we leaving it to your discretion?
In the past, you have been willing to leave it to my discretion, to be determined by the town planner. If you wanted, I could come back, if, if the application were to move forward, I could come back to you with that recommended amount.
So, so my feeling is I'm, I'm certainly willing to, to leave it to your discretion. However, I'm, I'm still a little confused on how the co-bond will work. I mean, say it was, you know, a million dollars or whatever, and you know, inland wetlands, you know, had a million dollar problem. Where, where does that leave us? I mean, is that a million dollars, you know, fifty-fifty, or, you know, how?
Either of you would have the authority and the ability to call the amount for your bond and the authority to release your bond. I think that's, again, I'd turn it back over to the town attorney, but we have had some discussion about this.
Yeah, you're, you would be, whatever you bond for will be protected. It's, it's money that you can access. It's, the purpose of putting it all in one bond was that some of the erosion control crossed over to both, and so we'd do it all in one. But your, your power is independent, and whatever amounts in addition to the erosion controls that you need, you'll have in your, in that bond also. It just gives the applicant the opportunity to post one bond, but you each have independent jurisdiction.
Okay, I think that's enough for me for now. Thank you.
Thank you. That said, I don't see any other commissioners with anything else to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just just had a couple of comments to bring to the commission. Like I said, I, I've reviewed a, a lot of the video. I've also spent the past probably two and a half to three months regularly traveling around the site location, traveling up and down sixty-eight. And so in becoming pretty familiar with the traffic and the testimony that we had received regarding the traffic. And I, I guess what I, I came up with from the studies, from the testimony, and the pieces of information that, at least the way I put it together from what we've received, is there was a lot of data that was used when Bristol Myers was in full operation for the determination of traffic. There was data that was obtained on a, a day when Mr. Greenberg, I believe, counted cars. And then there were factors that were put in place on the traffic be- based on the, the industry standard, as far as what warehouse traffic factor should be applied to that. And then today, we just got clarification that we're looking at about six hundred trips per day coming in and out of the facility. And that's six times the triggering factor of a special permit. This is a huge amount of traffic. This is a huge, huge project. I have to say that, that the town staff has worked unbelievable in trying to get all of the information out to us. You know, I'm relatively new on this commission, but it's been very impressive, the amount of work that they've done. And I gotta say that the applicant has also been very forthcoming and has made changes to the application based on our comments throughout this process. And I just commend everybody that's been involved in this. I just have a, I'm just having a tough time with the amount of traffic. Our peer reviewer reviewing the numbers as of the last change, and him, his comments being, well, we don't really know. We need to wait and see. And for this amount of traffic to come in on a wait and see type of assumption, I, I just, I like concrete, and I know we're not gonna get concrete from an estimate, but it just doesn't sit well with me. And I'm, I guess I'm the guy to say it. I, I, I'm, I don't know that I, that I feel very comfortable with this amount of traffic. I don't know that the peer reviewer made me feel very comfortable about this amount of traffic coming in. And I felt that, you know, I should let the commission know that that's my perspective on the application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Anyone else? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I think I would probably like to begin, as others have, and certainly think, beginning with the town staff. The town staff, our planning office, engineering, law department, the folks in the environment, the inland wetlands, everyone at the town who touched this project and touched this application, including our friends on the EDC. I, I, this is a lot of work. It's a lot of work, you know, and the words of Steve just said, you know, huge, massive. I mean, they, they, they keep coming out in, in, in this. I, I've sat up here a few, for a few years, and I, I, I think the idea of criteria for evaluating a special permit is something that, as I made a note at the beginning, you know, it's, it's doing my homework and doing our homework, so to speak. And I think this application, I, I know the applicant, you know, some of the duck correspondence, you know, the minutes says, they started working with the town in April of, of twenty eighteen, and here it is January of twenty nineteen. We just started talking with them, it's planning and zoning, in October. We had the meeting in, in, a long meeting in November, a long meeting in December, and now we're out of time. And, and I, I think my concern has been, and, and I, you know, it, it, it's no different than, you know, it's like a school assignment. You have a clock and the clock starts. This applicant chose to apply to the wetlands commission and the planning and zoning commission at the same time. The, either the calendar nor the clock helped us, because now we're left, time's out. Time's up. We have to make a decision based upon the meetings we've had and the information we have. And, and quite frankly, I wish we had more time to discuss this, but, but I will say this. At nine fifteen, I'm ready to say my comments and I'm ready to make a motion. But I, I, I do think, unfortunately, the applicant made the decision to apply concurrent. I, I understand they're anxious to get things moving, but a lot of decisions on this particular application were made before it got to planning and zoning. I think that the one thing that concerns me the most, and I'm gonna echo what, what Steve just said, is the traffic. And I think the last meeting in December, it entirely changed the traffic from the November meeting to the October meeting to the December meeting. And I think, quite frankly, at that time, the applicant should have withdrawn and started a whole new application to allow us time to delve, delve into the particulars. Specifically, the idea that the traffic was moved off of Carpenter Lane and onto Research Parkway at the December meeting. We never had a chance to talk about it much, you know, other than the December meeting, because at the December meeting, we closed the public hearing. This is a town road matching a state road, and all the traffic studies use the terminology. If I might, I quoted this in the October meeting. "The intersection of Research Parkway and Route sixty-eight is a massive signalized intersection comprised of four multilane approaches and five exclusive turning lanes. Three of the five exclusive turning lanes are dedicated to entering and exiting Research Parkway. Significant changes in Research Parkway traffic volumes may have significant impacts on the necessary traffic control, signal phasing, and timing at this intersection." And I think I dumbed that down at a meeting to talk about how long a light is. How long it takes you to get through a green light, how long it takes you to stop at a red light and the green arrow. I think the traffic for this particular application definitely warrants a special permit. And I think that it is important to note that on this, this particular application, it's too much. I think it's important to note that zoning is about, is about land use, not who the applicant is. I know a lot of people during the comments talked about, well, because this is, it's Google, is it Amazon? This commission's concern is land use. So, you know, and as we all know, the Walmart in Wallingford was not approved as Walmart. It was initially approved for Kmart. So things change and the applicants change, but the land use stays, stays as is. So I do want to say on the record that I will acknowledge this use is a permitted use in this area. But as Commissioner Cohen mentioned with, with the town planner, the traffic does warrant this to be a special permit, so it allows us to have more discretion. I want to be very clear that I do acknowledge warehousing is a permitted use in the zone. This clearly is the industrial zone, but it's, the IX is very important to this town. And I, I cannot stress enough that I am, it is clear to me for the years of sitting up here, that this is a permitted use in the area. But I think for this particular application, this particular site, and this particular, based upon the information received at this point, we are frankly out of time. And this project is too big to warrant the scale of this project. We have an obligation to judge an application based upon the rules. We appreciate always the public input, the staff, staff input and everybody else, but our decision is based upon our zoning book, accordance with the rules, and we should not and cannot be influenced by outside forces. Not to discount the fact that the, we have had significant input from the public. There's been, you know, a lot of discussion during the public process, and that is very, very welcome. But our job is based upon zoning book, zoning book and zoning regulations. One of the things I'd mentioned, Commissioner Cohen was talking about the conditions. At the December meeting, I had, I think, a three or four-page memo from the town planner with exhaustive conditions, and I must say it was exhausting. And you've, you heard Mr. Commissioner Cohen mention that there should be more conditions added. I, I, I think that speaks to the massiveness and, and the size of this, that, you know, quite frankly, the, me, either the plan should be withdrawn to address, or it should, you know, revisit it, because at this point, the conditions are so, such that we've never had something like that for another application that I can remember. Specifically, I think a town of our size, we have, you're looking at our zoning department. We have a town planner and a, a, a wonderful assistant town, excuse me, as, as assistant or part-time zoning enforcement officer. That's it. So when you have this, an application of this size with conditions that are extensive, I don't know if our town would be able to maintain and ensure that the conditions that we could impose on the applicant would be able to be enforced. Zoning enforcement is definitely an area that's been a big concern of this commission, and I, I, no, no, the zoning enforcement is a great job. We appreciate everything you do, but it's a lot of work. And, and I think, you know, part of the other condition on this application is the issues related to the blasting on the site, the potential construction of a massive retaining wall on the site. I mean, there's a lot of things that could be conditions, but there'd be a lot of safeguarding. So I guess what I would say is I, I do think that the traffic is a predominant issue here. The size is another large issue. I did not discuss the noise, but I would be on, like to be on record as saying, the noise stemming from this project would definitely impact the surrounding residential neighbors. The project could have an adverse impact to the residents in the area, and potentially is detrimental to the use of adjacent properties. I mean, and, and I think as you talk, the, the, talk about the compatibility with a zone, under section B point one, A through D, we talk about, it was mentioned by Commissioner Cohen, the appropriateness and location of use. I think the first A through D all have some issues related to this particular site. Lastly, I, I think, excuse me, not lastly, I think there is a couple of things I'd like to mention, because this commission never has a room like this. We never have the room filled. But we do have something that when we, as a group, talk about the plan of conservation development. And it was mentioned in our plan of development regarding the Bristol Myers site and the need to do something. And I, I was reviewing the town's plan of conservation development, and on page fifteen, we talked specifically in reference to economic development, talks about balancing the community's priorities for building and maintaining attractive landscapes and semi-rural character in its larger tracts of industrial land. and semi-rural character in its larger tracts of industrial land with the needs of corporations to build or modify facilities to match their operational requirements and financial constraints. And I, I do think that this is just a significant change in this particular area. So. Uh, lastly, Mr. Chairman, through you, I would like to request that we, um, discuss prior to a motion, the daycare. And quite frankly, I think the daycare request, um, should be handled separately as a request for a waiver to elected vision and possibly as an individual application ministry of approval. It's always been discussed at the end of this application, but, um, that's, that's my preference, but I'm not the applicant. But I think if the commission would agree, I think we should encourage the applicant to ask for the daycare to be handled separately.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Any comments regarding the daycare? Other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, um, I'm in agreement that I believe it ought to also be handled as a separate application. There's a lot of issues that result with it. Thank you.
Good.
Agreed.
Mr. Cohen?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Question about that. Um, is that something that the commission would generally entertain? I mean, typically that's something that you might entertain as an administrative application. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I was.
All right. I guess with that said, conditions of approval or?
Mr. Chairman, through you, I, 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 I think if I might ask you a question, are you looking for a motion?
I am.
Okay. And then what, their comments at this point?
No, their comments at this point? Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I, I will just add my final comments. The, the, this is a very large, uh, you know, and complicated application. I didn't even, you know, discuss traffic myself because I knew this was an overriding issue with, uh, you know, the rest of the commission. And I, I happen to agree with, you know, the comments by the other commissioners. However, um, you know, I, I, I can understand why, um, you know, we can't get a good traffic reading and it's, it's unfortunate. I don't, I don't know if this will ever come back and, you know, we're, we're still going to be in the same situation if we don't have a, you know, tenant in mind. Um, there were a lot of potential tenants that, uh, you know, in my research, not just, you know, Walmart, but you had Wayfair, you had QVC, Alibaba, you had a whole host of e-commerce sites that could potentially come back with this. Um, but what, what I really want to say is, um, a, a couple of the residents brought this really important factor up in the conversation. And I, I just want to talk about it because, um, at one time there was rumor that we had a for-profit school that potentially was going to occupy the Bristol Myers site. You know, it was, it was rumored, you know, nothing ever came to this commission. I don't know what came before the town. Um, but when that rumor started, the EDC came into us and, uh, requested a regulation change to, you know, disallow, uh, churches, schools, other nonprofits in this zone. And I happened to vote against that regulation change. Uh, for the simple reason I, I knew we would be here tonight with some other, uh, you know, application and, you know, the school would have reused that building, you know. Um, I don't know what the size was. I don't have any details, quite frankly. But, you know, students would have gone downtown. They would have, you know, parents would have come visited, stayed in hotels, visited the restaurants. You know, there wouldn't be any impacts to the wetlands. The traffic would be minimized. This was the time, I think, that a showing like this might have prevented us from, you know, being here tonight. And the resident asked, can we make, can we request the regulation change again? Sure you can. You know, you, you can get on the, the agenda and present your arguments and, you know, we can, we can always hear them and, you know, maybe change the regs again. Um, so I, I just wanted to leave that with, you know, my last comments. Um, I do think, you know, something a little less invasive, um, you know, on this site, you know, is preferable. And, um, that's it.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
If I might, thank you. I, I, Mr. Cohen, I, I certainly agree. And, and I, I think one of the things that, um, I, I meant to comment on, on your note, I apologize, I wrote it, is I think the peer review versus a full-blown traffic study for us is where we weren't served here. I, I think we had a great peer reviewer, um, but again, I, he ran out of time because the applicant ran out of time and we ran out of time. I think we didn't get, you know, an, an application of this size and magnitude in the IX, a special permit with this type of um, anticipated traffic, we should have pushed for as a commission or staff, a full-blown traffic study for the town. I mean, I, I think I look at us as, we represent the town here. I mean, we're, and I, I've said this last meeting, I've said it other meetings. They're the town staff, but we're the ones who have to make the, the vote. So I, I, I think, you know, that's something I would request because I do still see the value of a peer review. I think Mr. Colari did an outstanding job. But I think we were, um, unfortunately, because we received late, last minute, um, changes and the incomplete traffic study related to the new traffic design at the December meeting really was an unfortunate miss. We didn't have a lot of time, nor did he to kind of talk about that. And I think the idea that, you know, as I mentioned at the beginning of my comments, the fact they started with the town in April, but didn't start with us until um, October, most of the decisions have been made by the time they, they got to us. I mean, that's when I made the reference to, they were thought they were rounding third and we're at first base. And I still feel that we ran, we frankly ran out of time. I think the traffic is the driver and I, I, on, on this one, in, um, in addition to the scope, but the, um, I, I, I think that's, I wanted to make sure to, to state.
Thank you. Um, I guess, uh, that would be it for the comments. Commissioners, anything missed hand? Anything else? I guess, um, before we come back for a, um, uh, motion, um, I also want to concur with a lot of the comments from our commissioners. Jim, you always, you always cover it. You know, the, uh, the public, thank you for coming out. Thanks to you, we, we asked a lot of hard questions that we may not have, uh, or may not have had or, or thought of. But, uh, again, it's, it's, it's quite an enormous project. And I myself have been going back and forth every day regarding this, uh, as to what it, what it involves, what it's going to affect. And, uh, it's, it's not an easy decision, I know, for any of us to make up here on this particular application. But again, it's, it is an approved, approved application for the site. Or use, I'm sorry, a use. And, uh, I think with, with that said, the music has, uh, wants to stop the music.
Can I say one more thing?
Well, French, Frenchie, would like to say one more thing.
I just want people to know that I am basing my decision on the regulations, our staff and the engineers. They're the ones that know more about this than I do. So this is what I have to go by. Thank you.
Thanks, French. Um, I guess with that said, we'll just bring it back to the commission for a motion. Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Mr. Chairman.
And again, it's.
I'm ready, I'm ready. Uh, based upon the totality of the record, I move that the commission deny a special permit application for five Research Parkway, Wallingford, L C for traffic generation for five Research Parkway, Wallingford, L C to allow two warehouse distribution buildings totaling one million, one hundred and one, five hundred and twenty-five square feet at five Research Parkway as shown on plans entitled Permit Documents for Proposed Development, five Research Parkway, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated June fourth, twenty eighteen, revised November thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Because, one, the information presented related to the traffic, um, two, the, um, uh, criteria for evaluating special permit specifically appropriation of location of use, including, one, the size and intensity of the proposed use, the existing of other uses of the same kind of characteristic in the neighborhood and the effect thereof on said neighborhood. Three, the capacity of the adjacent streets to handle peak traffic loads and hazards created by the use. And, uh, four, the obstruction of light or air or emission of noise, light, so, um, smoke odor has cited in our appropriateness of location of use in the zoning book. In addition to all the comments that have been raised during the meetings. That's it.
That's it. Uh, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Voting is starting with?
Yes to deny.
Uh, French?
No.
Mr. Cohen?
Uh, yes to deny.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Yes to deny.
Excuse me. And yes to deny. We're just going to take a, a brief, uh, five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're taking a five-minute recess. At this point in time, I'd like to, uh, reconvene our, uh, our meeting of this evening of, uh, January fourteenth, twenty nineteen. Moving on to our agenda items, the next item on our agenda is, uh, item number four, it's a site plan to remodel a basement into clubhouse, construct two outdoor pavilions for P and A at one seventy-one North Plains Industrial Road. And, uh, Mr. Monarazzo, if you would please note all correspondence for the record? Mr. Chairman, we have a checklist dated twelve, twenty eighteen. We have a, uh, correspondence, um, regarding site application two thirty-one dash fifteen, dated January third, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, correspondence from, uh, OCC Group Incorporated dated, uh, September second, two thousand and fifteen. Uh, some correspondence from, uh, Rosalind Page to Casey Costello, uh, dated, uh, three one, two thousand and nineteen. Correspondence, uh, dated, uh, December twenty eighth, two thousand and eighteen regarding site plan application two thirty-one dash fifteen. Uh, signed by Casey Hand, Town Planner. Memorandum to Casey Hand, Town Planner from Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, dated December tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Um, interdepartmental referral referencing application two one seven dash one eight dated nine, seven, eighteen, signed by Environmental Planner. Interdepartmental referral regarding application two one seven dash eighteen, uh, dated October fifth, two thousand and eighteen, signed by the Fire Marshal. Inter-office memorandum to Casey Costello, Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated, uh, November eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Correspondence from Winterborne Land Services dated November eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Correspondence dated January ninth, two thousand and nineteen regarding site application two one seven dash eighteen. Signed by Casey Hand, Town Planner. Correspondence from Edward
Zavaski.
Zavaski. To, uh, Casey Costello, uh, dated, uh, ten one, two thousand and nineteen. And this is just some, um, what do we call this? Some notification, some?
Uh, just, uh, information, I get information.
Information packet. Get a date on here. Uh, date, oh, we'll go down about, uh, one, seven, nineteen, two thousand and nineteen. That's it. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Monarazzo. If the applicant and/or, and/or its representative, please introduce, uh, themselves and, uh, begin your presentation.
For the record, my name is Rosalind Page, professional land surveyor from Winterborne Land Services with an office at six oh four Center Street in Wallingford.
For the record, my name is Edward Zavaski, president of the Polish National Alliance slash five thirteen, right here in Wallingford, with a proposed plan for the expansion down to one seventy-one, or it plans to a road. Thank you.
Welcome.
And again, I'd like to be able to
Absolutely.
point to things on the easel. This, uh, app, this application was originally in front of you and was approved by your board, um, in two thousand and fifteen. At that time, the, uh, P and A property which is depicted here on North Plains Industrial Road and North Plains Highway, which goes here, uh, the large green open area here, um, at that time, the existing function hall, um, they were proposing to keep that as an existing two-story function hall and, uh, relocate their clubhouse from their current location on Prince Street and build a separate, uh, clubhouse for themselves on this property. And that was going to be located in this area. And as part of that application, we came in front of you for a site plan approval for the two-story function hall and the clubhouse, um, and associated parking. Um, and that was approved in two thousand and fifteen. Um, pursuant to that, the, um, P and A have decided to modify, um, their ideas. And what they, um, would like to do now, and that's why we're back in front of you for a revision to that site plan, is now rather than building a separate clubhouse, they would like to take the, um, downstairs floor of the two-story function hall and turn that into their clubhouse area and have the function hall totally on the upper floor. So that is essentially the difference. Um, so as a result, we've made some reasonably minor changes to the plans. So now instead of a clubhouse out of the front here, uh, we have the clubhouse will now function out of the lower floor on the existing function hall here. And the only additional construction that they are requesting approval for are, um, op, or are open pavilions. Two pavilions, both fifty by thirty, uh, in the area. They, um, will have a roof on them and just, uh, supports, but they will not be closed in. They will be for seasonal outdoor picnic type of activities. On the rare occasion that it rains, people can go in under their, um, On the rare occasion that it rains, people can go in under there, um, for, for their activities. So, uh, that is part of the change that we've made to our application to have these two proposed, uh, pavilions. So, in addition to that, the, basically, the only other change is we still have pretty much the same amount of parking. The configuration is slightly different. Before, when we had the clubhouse at the front, fronting on North Plains Highway, we had the members parking in this area and then the function hall people parking at the back. Now, um, the P&amp;A organization has asked us to designate an area back here for the, um, for the members only. So there's been a change in the parking configuration, but the number of spaces is basically the same. The grading is the same. The stormwater drainage management is the same, uh, underground chambers here. There are still two entrances here that we had proposed before. We are still proposing to, uh, leave this area as, um, designated overflow parking for the Trail of Terror, um, event that takes place in October. Again, that was part of our previous approval with you, was that during that month of October, this area would be set aside for overflow parking. So really, those, those are the only changes. The clubhouse has gone away. It's now going to be in the lower floor and we have the two pavilions here for seasonal picnic type of, of activities. As a result of the town staff reviewing this, um, updated application, they had some questions and we have been working with the town staff to answer them. One of the, um, requirements is, um, to provide municipal sewer hookup to the function hall. Right now, the function hall operates on a septic system. Um, and as part of our original application with the clubhouse, we were going to have a sewer lateral tie-in to the new clubhouse. So now, again, as part of this revamped site plan, we are now proposing a sewer connection to the function hall. So now the function hall and the clubhouse, uh, activities will both be served by municipal sanitary sewer. So that's part of, that is one significant change. In terms of, um, other comments from the town planner, um, I believe that, uh, Mr. Zavaski has submitted some documentation, which he can answer more fully, um, as to how they propose to limit the use and the functions to the maximum of a hundred and seventy people. So there is documentation, which I believe you have in your packets from him, but he can answer questions on that. We do agree that, um, only one of the following will occur at any particular time, the function hall, um, the trail, when the Trail of Terror is operating, the function hall will not be rented out, the clubhouse will not be used. So, again, not to, to provide issues with traffic. In terms of, uh, the town planners, note number four about the wooden pole barrier space designation with the commission, we are proposing the same, um, configuration or the same pattern of, of, uh, protection as we did before. The, um, dividing lines between the rows of parking here, at the back of the parking here, these will be, um, utility poles which we've mounted on, um, what's the word I'm saying? Poles. Sorry. They'll, they'll be mounted, they'll be mounted on poles, so they will be maximum two feet above the ground. And the parking, um, striping will be marked on the parking. That was a question that had come up in the last application. How will people know? Because the parking areas will be processed stone, how will people know where the spaces are? Uh, the answer to that is the, the poles will have, um, markings on them. To prevent stone from migrating from the parking areas onto the landscaped islands at either end of the parking rows, there will be additional utility poles and those will be fastened straight to the ground. So there will be no way the processed stone can get underneath them. So that's the same, um, same process that we had come up with last time. We do agree that if any light trespass is created, that, um, light poles can be, can be relocated. We also are agreeable to provide bollards between the sidewalk adjacent to the building and the adjacent parking spaces. That is along here, so that if handicapped parking people park in here, they will not, um, encroach onto the sidewalk area and therefore impede pedestrian access. And, um, we did provide a drainage report as part of our original application in 2015. If the town engineer would like us to resubmit it, we're happy to do that. Again, nothing has changed from our parking, basic parking, um, storm drainage management In addition, note number ten from the town planner asked about the existing trees along North Plains Highway. There are about a dozen trees here along this line. They will all be maintained, they will all stay in place, except for the ones that, uh, would, would fall within the new driveway locations. Obviously, those would have to be taken down. And then, one of the other requirements from the town planner is that we show a row of trees along, uh, North Plains Industrial Road to be planted, and we have added those, I believe, to the plans that you have in your package. Where there are gates across the two driveways, uh, we are proposing to work with the emergency services departments to decide what is the best methodology for them to be able to access the property in the event of it, the emergency, when the gates are locked, if there's no other activity going on. Whatever it is that they want in terms of access keys or, um, boxes, we will work with them to, to address that. So I think from the technical point of view, that is, um, basically an overview of it. If you have any questions from a technical point of view or from the, um, use point of view, um, Mr. Zavaski is here to answer the questions.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, before I go to commission members and, and our, uh, town planner, I would like just to, uh, have a little bit more of a, a detail about just the restriction of the hundred and seventy people, just how that is going to be managed, you know, when there is, you know, obviously, an outside event. So if we could get some more detail on that, uh, I think we would all appreciate that.
Uh, we spoke, Casey, myself, Jim Rishi, and Roslin, and we felt the best way to control it would be engaging our rental agent to explain to the people that will be leasing, that the max they could bring would be a hundred and seventy people, which would, you know, continue to qualify for the hundred-hour peak trips based on the current, uh, you know, uh, regulations. We feel we can manage that. We will sit with our board as well to come up with, uh, criteria, parameters, to assist the rental agent with that as well. We, you know, have not specifically sat down with that, but we feel we can manage that at point of, uh, leasing application to explain to these people that one seventy would be the capacity for an event.
And how would you go about perhaps just policing that? I realize you set up your criteria, but making sure that, you know, that doesn't occur where all of a sudden from one seventy, uh, you know, now you have two hundred, two hundred and fifty people. How, how would you go about doing that? The policing of it?
As far as us managing that?
Yeah, exactly.
Um, I, I think we would have to get from the LSE exactly what they anticipate for that particular event and explain to them that the max they can bring down would be a hundred and seventy people, because we have to comply with the regulations that are in place with the town of Wallingford, that our rental agent would advise of that as well. And perhaps we could send down a representative of the club to make sure that would be, um, complied with during the event. I think that's the best way of doing it.
Okay. And, you know, Mrs. Hand, you had numerous, numerous comments for the applicant, I believe. It appears that majority, if not all of those have been addressed, but if you could please, uh, just discuss or, or mention which ones still may be an issue.
Okay, um, so generally, as you know, they're laid out and Ms. Page, uh, addressed a lot of these. Generally, they're laid out as recommended conditions in, um, my January ninth, 2019, um, mem... memorandum. Um, the, um, several of these, they've, they've agreed to, um, address, um, or some of the, I shouldn't say several, the few that remain, they've agreed to address on final plans, um, again, the existing trees, that's already been addressed. The provision of the drainage report, so we'll get confirmation of the town engineer whether or not he wants a new drainage report. Um, I have recommendation for a fifty-two-hundred-dollar sedimentation and erosion control bond and sign up from the health department. Uh, the issue with, one thing that was sort of alluded to is, and, and this is permitted in your regs, um, so your regs require a dustless surface for paved areas, so that could be anything from processed stone to full pavement. Um, I, I always like to try to, sometimes with, when it's processed stone, we run into issues with maintenance and, um, protecting the landscaped areas and designating parking. So sometimes it sort of sounds like a good idea up front and then through the functioning of it, 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 people run into issues. So I've been trying to make sure with the applicants that sort of they're clear about, okay, how, thinking about how are we gonna make sure to protect our landscaping? How are we gonna make sure our parking spaces are designated? Think about having to plow, because you end up pushing the stone around. So I think, but I think we've talked about that and I think they have some conditions in place to, or some, uh, elements in place to, to address those issues as best we can. And they understand, and it's laid out in here, that obviously if, it's laid out in your regulations, if the landscaping dies, it's gotta get replaced. So that kind of thing. Uh, but I just wanna make sure that was clear on the record. And then, the other thing that was alluded to was the use, um, the, sort of the uses. So the, the use on the property is approved as a club, um, and that's what was approved in 2015 when we had that conversation. Um, since that time, um, it has been rented, being rented out for more public, broader events where people not affiliated with the club can have an event there, whether it's, you know, a wedding or a, you know, a shower or a festival of some sort. Um, and obviously, when they're, with the building, there are restrictions about maximum capacity per the fire marshal. Um, when something can be outside, there's not. So I wanted to make sure, two things, I wanted to make sure that as part of, and, and they wanted to make sure that as part of this application, we're clear on what the approved use of the property is. So really, part of this application, to me, actually, the bigger part in some ways than the, than the site plan necessarily, even though they're real, you know, integral, is, um, that we're going from a propos... from a club use to a broader sort of event facility, um, which sort of falls under your food service category or your, um, entertainment category. Um, so, so somewhere in there, but I wanted, I, I wanted to make sure that the commission knows kind of what we're approving. So I, that's why I included some of the information from the website, just to give you kind of a broad spectrum. So while the site plan is part of it, we're also talking about the use here in terms of what, this is a, basically also a change of use application at the same time, which you see all the time, site plan and change of use together. Um, so, and with that, um, obviously, you have the potential to trigger the hundred-peak-hour trip generator, which would be a special permit. So that's why we kind of talked about that and how that would be kept, um, in check for the time being. And then, I anticipate that, that the club will be coming back to you, um, or at least they have the option to come back to you for a special permit in the future if they wanted to be allowed to have, um, larger events. I don't, um, anticipate that there would be any huge traffic improvements that would need to be made, but we would need a traffic, you know, we, you would require a traffic study in order to consider that at the time. So, um, so I think we found sort of a good, um, something that works for them for now, um, while they kind of figure out the other components. But I, I, it, the important thing to me is I wanna make sure what they're proposing use-wise is, is clear to the commission, so that we're sort of moving from this club use to this broader function use. And that would allow them to, to rent it out and, and, and do that kind of thing. And, um, so we have seen, you know, they've, they've, there's been a pretty wide gamut of some of the events that, that they've looked to do, so, um, just wanted to make sure that's clear. Um, and I think that, um, yeah, I think, I think that pretty much covers everything. The landscaping, um, I think is in good shape. Uh, the only other sort of interesting issue here is the Trail of Terror. Um, it's only, you know, for one month or what have you during the year. It's, it's, I didn't realize that it was actually technically on the same property. It's, it is, so, but it's, you know, because it's a short-term use, um, and it's existing, so it's essentially grandfathered, but we still wanted to account for that here. Um, they still, as Ms. Page said, um, will have some overflow parking in that area for the Trail of Terror. Um, I guess the one question is whether or not you want, if you're comfortable with it just labeled as overflow parking, or if you want it more formally designated. I mean, I, it's, it's, I'm comfortable with it labeled as just, you know, it's a, it's a lawn area, it's a nice lawn, it's a very nice lawn area, but they use it for overflow parking. It's right before winter starts, so it's not like any landscaping is being really destroyed for the spring or something. Um, so, uh, with that, I, I think we're in pretty good shape. I would just ask that, um, you make my January ninth memo a condition of approval if you're inclined to act.
Sure. I just have, uh, just one, one question on that. When you're talking on item number two, you said only one of the following may occur at any given time, use of the function hall for an event, use of the clubhouse, outdoor event, or the Trail of Terror. So the way I'm reading this is, if, let's say the Trail of Terror is there, then the clubhouse, it in fact could not be used by the members, is that what we're saying here?
That was the general discussion, because we'd go over the hundred-seventy trips.
So that's...
And that, I mean, that was more, I guess, I guess...
No, I, no, I, no, I understand that. I was, I was looking at it, saying that that's, seems to be somewhat restrictive, if the Trail, if the Trail of Terror is there, then the clubhouse can't be used, but by having the Trail of Terror, one of these other events, and then using the clubhouse, if that could perhaps trigger, then the, uh, you know, the, the, uh, the traffic and then make it a special permit...
Right.
Then that's really the, that's an issue for the applicant.
Yeah.
Because they could come back right now and say, "We wanna have, uh, uh, more functions there, that's gonna create more traffic," so therefore they're applying for a special permit. So, again, i- it's not necessarily a, it's a restriction that you've mentioned, but it's only a restriction, I wanna say, to, to accommodate them to, to stay below the, uh, the trip generation number, correct?
Yeah, and, and they could, what we talked about is they could come back...
No, no, I, no, I, no, I understand that.
And they could, it could be at levels in terms of what the overlap is. Some, some forms of overlap are probably a lot less concerned than, than others.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. Okay. Commission members, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
I have a couple of questions, followed to the chairman's questions. Casey, just, just to make sure I understand clearly, so, and I appreciate that. Is any part of the 2015 approval subject to this application or, cause you used the term grandfathered, and I said to Jim, because it was approved in 2015 for Trail of Terror, right, and now that's on the plan, I mean, I'm fine with that, but does it need to be mentioned as a condition? Or is it on the plan, we're good?
The Trail of Terror specifically?
Parking.
The parking component for the Trail of Terror?
Yeah.
I think this supersedes that application, so I would say it again on this.
All right. Did you, if I missed, did you, did you have a condition of S&amp;E bond amount? I didn't...
Yeah, it's in the memo, it's fifty-two-hundred.
Okay. And then, if I could, to follow up on the, the last question for the chairman, so, let, let's talk about this, because it's, I, I've been to this facility a number of times, so, indoors and outdoors. So I, I think I know traffic. When you say a hundred-peak hours, okay, I've always, you're saying a hundred-peak hours of the twenty-four-hour period. So for example, or... So for example, or just morning peak and evening peak? This is where, using peak hour, I would, can you quantify that for me?
Peak hour is whatever the busiest hour is. So it could be seven o'clock in the morning, it could be, most likely, in their case, it's, you know, if, for an event, it's whatever the start of that event is. So say noon on a Saturday, or six on a Saturday, or something like that.
So, so a function, and then because of the, just to clarify, because it's such a nice facility inside and out, and, you know, parking, the hundred is, is, it's a trips, it's not capacity. It's the trips, so a hundred people go to a baby shower themselves, that's a hundred cars, boom, it's triggered.
Right.
All right. And then, but the evening, during the Trail of Terror, when it's not being used other than parking, they're outside that. That, that, that would not impact them, or would that?
Well, I think that's why, I mean, that's already there, that's been there.
Yeah.
So I think that's essentially, there, that's already, that's why the, the issue with the overlap, because they're probably already at their hundred when
Right.
the Trail of Terror is open. So if you add more trips, that's kind of where we run into. And, and that's why we talked about, and I would encourage them to, to come for the special permit, and kind of, because like I said, there, there are, I think, more impactful layers of this and less impactful layers, but I also think, and I'm sure Mr. Zabowski could speak to this, they, when the Trail of Terror is open, I mean, they know kind of what their limitation, you know, that, that, that sort of gets over.
That's absolutely correct.
Yeah.
It's not our first rodeo, and we want you to continue coming back to our facility, with the commissioners, do not stop, as we expand here. We need the revenue.
I have nothing further.
Any other commission members? Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Um, yeah, I was at an event this summer, too, and it was fun, so.
Fun is important.
In another five years, I'll be back, so, hopefully sooner.
We'll have our special permit approved by you by then.
You had that much fun, so it takes five years.
Well, it was a reunion, so, but we had a good time.
Eddie, excuse me.
Just, and, and I have been through here with Trail of Terror, and, uh, you know, I know the grassy areas is cordoned off, and it's, it's really well-managed, like, I got stuck in the traffic there, but it, it flowed very well. The only question I have is, you've got, you know, two, two entrances, how, how do you expect the, uh, uh, traffic to flow? Or is, is the first entrance gonna be gated off? Or, you know, how, how will the traffic, you know?
I'm gonna default to Roslin, because we specifically were concerned with what you're saying.
Yeah. I don't see it as a concern, but.
It's not, but we want you to understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we all addressed it ourselves.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right now, as you know, there's just the one entrance in here. So, um, what we wanted to do was to have, uh, the abilities for people to come in for the function hall, but also for members, um, if they were just going to the clubhouse, to be able to go straight to the back, park in this area, and walk down into, to the, to the clubhouse at the back. Um, I think for, for just traffic flow, it was a good idea to have the two, the two gates, uh, the two entrances. Um, but at any time, the, the organization can control it by having either one of these gates closed off. That's the idea about having, having them gated.
Yeah, makes sense. So, so if you had two events going, I mean, there, there, I assume there'd be signage saying, you know, members go in this entrance, and.
Yes, yes, as it, as it is, we propose, uh, signs in this area to indicate that this is members-only parking in the back here.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I, I guess, um, I'm looking at the, um, the conditions, and I guess, I just have a question on three B. Um, it says, and maybe I'm just focused on the language there. It says, "Any use of the function hall and/or clubhouse while the Trail of Terror is open will not be permitted." And I'm just wondering if, what any use means? Any use of the clubhouse as a clubhouse for an event, for multiple people? I mean, if a member happens to be attending the Trail of Terror, can they hop into the clubhouse to use the facilities quickly? Or is that not a permitted? I, I don't, the, I just, the language seems really restrictive, and I don't know what we're looking for there.
I think you're interpreting it correctly. So I, I mean, because, again, because we're at the, the, sort of at, bumping up against your trip hour generation, or, I mean, I, I think in the traffic information submitted, I think the hours for the club were, were not typically the same hours that the Trail of Terror is open, um, or at least for the meetings. So if it's not the same hours, that, that would be fine. Um, and, yeah, I mean, if somebody is going to the Trail of Terror, and they go into the clubhouse, is that, you know, I mean, I, I think that's, that, you know, probably not an issue, because they're doing the same traffic generation both times, but the idea is, we, we can't, again, we're bumping up against that maximum, maximum trip generation issue. So I mean, alternatively, you could, I thought about, you could impose some sort of condition that says only X number of people can be in the clubhouse during these, but I mean, how do we, that's a virtual, that's an enforcement impossibility, so.
May I just say that our big concern during the month of October is we cannot rent the function hall upstairs, because it just doesn't work. It's a nightmare. You have people renting, and are upset with the people parking for the trail, and our, our poor rental agent's gonna go berserk, so we're very aware, we're not gonna do that during the month of October, but the clubhouse, like you say, if someone pops down that went to the trail, that's a member, it's hopefully okay.
I guess, I guess as long as the applicant's okay with that condition.
Well, I guess, I mean, when I'm looking at two, then I'm looking at three B, it seems, number two is very clear, that only one of the following can occur. I think this is what we, this is what we, I think, Mrs. Hanwell, you and I were talking about.
Yeah.
You can only do one of the four things. So it seems to some degree, three B is just redundant.
Redundant, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't think that that.
I think I wrote three before I wrote two.
Yeah, I, I, I think if we decide on, you know, on approving this, as far as any of the conditions of approval, that, in my mind, just three B would probably be appropriate to be, uh, just simply removed, because I think two addresses the issue very clearly. Anyone else? Uh, just one comment. Uh, I know we always like to talk about noise. And just when you do have outside events, if you can just have people, just turn the, turn the volume down just a little bit. I live out on Grebe Road, and there was one time, on once, one Saturday, where, and all of a sudden, I hear all this music, and I'm driving around the neighborhood, and Grebe Road's quite a ways away. I'm trying to figure out where the noise is coming from, and it's, you know, from your, you know, your place, I don't know what event it was, but just whenever you rent it out, just have people be a little bit conscious about that. That's a minor, a minor issue. That's a fair request. We'd also like to thank Casey Roslin, as well as yourselves, because obviously, Casey being out was a little challenging for us as well. We could have perhaps put more of this together with the permit, you know, the special permit being incorporated, but we couldn't. But a big thanks to Casey for helping us and guiding us to make it work for the town and for our, our Polish club, so thanks. Okay, good. Any other commission members like to make any comments? If there's none, again, this is not a public hearing. We've always entertained comments from anyone in the, in any of the audience. No one? At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission approve a site plan for the P and A to construct two fifteen-hundred-square-foot outdoor pavilions totaling three thousand square feet, change the use to allow the use of existing building, and the outdoor property has both a club and an event facility, and make associated site improvements and parking expansion. At one seventy-one North Plains Industrial Road, a show of the plans entitled Site Development Plans for Proposed Pavilions and Parking Area Improvements to Serve the Polish National Alliance Society, Inc., one seventy-one North Plains Industrial Road, with access off North Plains Highway, Wallingford, Connecticut, prepared June twenty-eighth, twenty-eighteen, revised through January third, twenty-nineteen. Subject to the following conditions: Number one, comments of the town of Wallingford Town Planner dated January ninth, twenty-nineteenth, with the removal of three B. Number two, uh, comments of the scene engineer from the water and sewer department dated November eighth, twenty-eighteen. Number three, posting of the S and E bond in the amount of five thousand two hundred as recommended by the town planner.
Do we have a second, uh, do we have a motion on the application? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. You can clap, guys. You can clap too, for yourself. Again, we're not an entertainment pavilion. All right, uh, Mrs. Han, if you would please lead us through the, uh, rest of our agenda, if you would, please.
Sure. Um, okay, item number six is a bond reduction request. We are requesting it, or we are recommending it be reduced to two thousand dollars.
Do we have a recommendation, uh, based on our town planner's, uh, comments on the bond reduction?
Um, I, can I also add one thing to that?
Absolutely.
I would recommend that it be reduced to the two thousand, with the caveat that the additional construction work in the future be appropriately bonded.
And do we have a motion on that request?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the commission approve the bond reduction as recommended by the town planner for six oh five North Elm Street, with a further caveat that all future, um, conditions be appropriately bonded as recommended by the office of the town planner.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. And yes. Thank you, Mrs. Han, if you'd please continue.
Yes, um, now we start our election of officers attempts for the year, um, but you don't have all your regular members here, so that will postpone to next month.
Maybe we should have an under-over, as far as when we think it's gonna occur.
I think we had almost a full year, one year. Um, okay, uh, administrative approvals, I will leave it for you if you have any questions.
Anyone questions on any of the administrative approvals?
Nope.
Seeing none?
Okay, ZBA applications, we are fortunate enough to have our zoning enforcement officer here, so I'll let her tell you about those.
Limited, uh, very limited agenda and, and decisions. We had various requests, uh, in December. But yeah, we had, uh, no application, or was continued, um, for a side variance. Uh, applicant did not show, and is due to come, hopefully, this month. And we also had an agreement, a motion to approve a settlement uh, for Wallingford Center, Inc. versus sixty-five South Colony Street in Blue Fit Fitness for a variance, so we're vacating the variance on that property for parking and use. Uh, this month coming up, uh, one application, use variance requests from, uh, Radiile New Haven for mixed use of light manufacturing and assembly and office use in the IX zone, where simply office use is permitted.
Thank you. Any questions? And Mrs. Han, if you'd please continue.
Finally, uh, zoning enforcement log. Um, since I'm just coming back, or just kind of getting back into the swing of things, we, we are sort of just getting back to spending some time on zoning enforcement, but I will let, um, zoning enforcement officer also fill you in on that.
Well, the reflection is not in the compliance closed category, but more if you had the wherewithal to, um, look at the size of the new violations, because I did get back out there most recently on, um, to deal with some ongoing problem sites on, um, North Plains Industrial and Route Five primarily, and have had some progress already, however slight, especially with, uh, one of our fifteen-year violators at Imports Unlimited. Um, just parking on landscaping and on top of each other, and onto neighboring properties and such, and he's already reached out and has started to move them, and I will continue to follow up on that, so, but. Big effort, coming back again, till Christmas is over, signage, big signage push, so.
Anybody have questions? I have one on, uh, page, uh, page five, the sixth one down on Windswept Hill Road. And the reason why I'm asking on that one, I know that, you know, that's, there's been an ongoing issue with respect to the, the violation, and I believe the town, uh, was working with the applicant, because there was an application, it was presented, or there was an application that was filed, and the commission never heard the application, because I believe there were additional questions from the town, and, uh, at the end of the day, um, I'm not sure if the applicant withdrew the application, or if we denied it, simply because the applicant never, uh, you know, never, uh, addressed the town issues, and never was at a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, so. Uh, I, I, I would just request that if there would be some, you know, some, some attention given to that now, not necessarily, you know, immediate attention, but just looking at it, because it, it has been an issue. It looked like it was going to be potentially resolved through a, through a new application, and now it's been probably at least five or six months since that application was denied.
Yeah, what happened with that is, um, sort of at the, um, after they'd been through much of the process with us, it was determined that they needed a wetlands permit. So that's what they've been doing for the last few months, but I think they have their, it's, yeah, it's probably time for them to.
If you would just, if you would just check with wetlands, to make sure that that's an active application that they're working on, rather than a lip service application?
Yeah.
If you would do that, please. And the other thing is, I was just looking at, because there's a whole lot of them on, uh, you know, dwelling units, it's like on page one. Uh, you know, dwelling units, dwelling units, I take it those are illegal dwelling units? Is that correct? Not necessarily just e, each specific one, but is that generally that they're illegal dwelling?
Generally, and specifically, number, uh, on the page one, number one forty-seven, South, was that South Woodley Street, I'm sorry. Uh, it was North. We have, uh, had, have some recommendations coming primarily from the fire depart, fire marshal.
Yeah, that, I guess my only.
And so they're, they're in the basement, and then the third floors and second floors.
Yeah, see, my issue with, with that be, if they're illegal dwelling units, uh, and if we know they're there, and we're not, and again, I'm not being critical, but we're not taking, you know, aggressive action, then if, gosh forbid, something happens in those units and people are injured, then, you know, what's the town's culpability as far as, you know, not following up and not resolving the issue? So that's, that's my concern with respect to that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just, just to address that, this, uh, that very issue just came up, and sort of a new approach, and being that, um, it's varying town departments are going, are being noted in concert, for example, the, the, the most recent one that I was speaking of, which was the building department, the health department, it initiated from the fire marshal, and of course, zoning, so we took a different approach, and we all went out together. And then that was certainly the avenue taken with the violator, was that, you know, the, the much bigger issue, what's permitted, is somebody's safety.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, the permitted use, it, it's violating a permitted use, that's one issue, but to me, it's more important the safety of people that are living in, you know, one of the, you know, in a dwelling.
You know, I hate to bring this up at this late hour, but, um, I'll just throw it out there for future discussion or future consideration. There is a citation, there is law that allows the zoning enforcement officer citation capabilities, and a few years ago, we, the town enacted a citation ordinance for two things, as sort of, I think, as, as a, I perceived it to be sort of a trial, to see how it went, and to make sure there weren't, you know, I think there was, there were concerns about us overstep, you know, overstepping, or something along those lines, i, if we were given citation capabilities. Um, and I can say with signs, I mean, it's still, we, we, we don't go around writing people citations, it's a, it's, it's really used as, you know, sort of a stick, or as, as, and as a last. and as a last, last resort kind of issue, and we've never actually issued a fine. We've come really close a few times, but we've never actually issued a fine, and I've been thinking that, you know, given some of this, the staffing limitations we have, and some of the other limitations that we have, um, a- and some of the limitations in zoning enforcement in general, it might be time to start pursuing adding some more violate, types of violations to the citation potential, and maybe dwelling units would be one of the ones we would think about adding. Um, so I mean, I, I guess, I'm putting that out there for you to think about, if that's something that the commission would endorse, it would go to the town council, but whether that's something the commission would think about endorsing, or want to have a conversation about endorsing moving forward.
Yeah, from my perspective, I don't, I don't mean to make light of signs or dumpsters in certain areas and that, that's, that's important. Uh, we find people for that or not, I, I, I'm, again, that's one thing, but I think when we're talking about safety, I think that that's an issue that we should really look at, and, and I think, and again, when I say aggressively enforce, I, I, it's no slight on our zoning enforcement officer, or, or the planning department, because I understand from a staffing standpoint, but I think that that's something that we should look at, too, you know, aggressively look to resolve some of these issues purely from a safety issue.
And, and I will say, you know, some of the time it's a zoning violation, but they address their fire code issues, so.
And that's fine.
And, and at least then the safety, the, the immediate safety.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's, that's fine. Any other commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
I, I would certainly agree with, with that. I mean, it does make sense to revisit it, whatever we could do to support the staff in zoning enforcement makes sense. Um, in relation to that, I did, I did want to ask, I was approached recently by someone who was complaining of blight, what number do they call? It's not your office, is it?
Depending on exactly what the, what the issue is, it's typically, I, it's, there is a blight component of one of, in the building department.
Building department.
So you call the building department, um, sometimes it's, it's lies with the health department, but the place to start is the building department.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that any commission members would like to bring forward? Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, just quickly, uh, you know, we had our annual dinner at the regional planning last week, and, uh, I've been elected vice chairman, so I'll be there for two years and chairman, um, but we, we had a presentation by a gentleman from Data Haven, and, you know, I, I thought his presentation was, was pretty good. He looked at the, uh, analytics around populations around, you know, Connecticut and towns, and, um, you, you know, I, if you get a chance, take a look at their, their website, um, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, next time around, it's a way off for the plan of conservation and development, that would have some very interesting information to, uh, you know, provide, so.
Good. Anyone else? I guess just picking up, uh, when Mr. Cohen mentioned the plan of conservation and develop, Casey, uh, rather, Mrs. Han, as far as setting up another meeting of the, you know, of the, of the committee to, I think it's, if we can, you know, look at that. And then the other thing is, uh, where, where are we in timing as far as our moratorium on electronic signs?
You have a new application on your tables.
Oh.
For it, to extend it one more time, um, because I wasn't here.
That's, I think we all understand.
Yeah.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor.
Yes.
I oppose abstentions, we're adjourned. Have a good evening.